Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 25th Dona Port meeting. Our first applicant tonight is a continuation from the Herring Brook Meadows LLC. We will be running about an hour and a half on this part of the week at 8:30. We have another applicant tonight, another application that we'll take over there. I'm going to try to work through the presentation. We're going to ask some questions as we open the questioning up to the floor as well. So there's going to be a chance to talk this evening. So with that, in order...
Sure. I don't know already, but just...
Of course.
...name and...
Andrew.
Andrew.
That's your number?
Yeah. I just...
For the record, Jeff Angler from SCB LLC. SCB Herring Brook, in this case, is the applicant. I appreciate appearing before the board this evening and the neighborhood. I'm going to instruct my team to be sensitive of time, recognizing there is something else on the agenda. Basically, from the first hearing, I think one of the things that's important is ultimately, obviously, the peer review report, which is about to take place, and hopefully we have for the next hearing. But what we've done since the first hearing, as I think people that attended could attest and the board, we got a lot of questions, a lot of requests for information. And what we've attempted to do, and what we submitted for the record a couple of days ago, is we've attempted to answer a lot of those questions. Some require more analysis than others. I'm not representing either that our submittal Tuesday answers every question that we heard at the first hearing. There's still some things outstanding that we'll get to. But as part of any public hearing process, the goal is to whittle down the outstanding items. And we think we've made a good attempt so far. So our presentation tonight is a little, for lack of a better description, clunkier than the first time in that we had more discrete topics. Here, there's no exact, really rhyme or reason to how we compiled the 24 exhibits or the order they're in. Basically, we kind of compiled it as they were provided to us. So we're going to tick through all of them. We're not going to stop and discuss some of them because, quite frankly, they don't really lend themselves to a visual presentation if they can submit it to the record. Some things, I think, will be more interesting, others to the neighborhood. So we're going to have our architect and the civil, as well as me, kind of talk about some of the things that we've provided. So unless anybody has any questions, we'll kind of jump right into what we submitted.
Should you say your number one?
I'm talking about, yeah, the stuff that was submitted. I think we submitted it on Tu- we submitted it on Tuesday. You might not have gotten it until yesterday.
I just received it now, and I'm going to ask that if you would respectfully understand that, you know, at least I don't consider a submittal two days prior to a hearing a timely submittal. I had not had an opportunity to read it. I was out of my office all day yesterday. I was in today, but didn't do it. And, you know, it's very important, I know, to you, and certainly very important to me as sitting on your application, that I have an opportunity to read and absorb what you submit. So I would ask in the future, if you could kind of get us stuff a week in advance of the hearing, because, again, I have not read it at all.
Well, I understand that, and, you know, I apologize for part of that, but frankly, some of this stuff wasn't ready until Tuesday. So we could have aspired to a week before, but, and we could have submitted an incomplete. So I understand the need to get things ahead of time, and we'll do our best in the future to provide things in a timely manner.
Thank you.
So the first eight or seven items are really, there were some questions about the building, the outbuilding, if you will, related to the groundwater discharge, the stormwater, I mean, the, basically, the groundwater discharge permit. So we have some examples from some other projects, just to give the board and neighbors kind of a little bit of a feel of what they look like from the exterior as well as from the interior.
More, do you know?
Hmm. It's a good question. I'm going to... One drop off.
Yeah, I want to call that, mind it. Yeah, sure.
You guys want to talk about anything, please? Good evening, Al Freykemus, Site Tech Environmental, both sites have been here on the project. This is a photograph of the outbuilding over at the South Shore Baptist Church in Hingham. They put on an $11 million addition to the church a few years back, and as part of that, Hingham, there was no, we had to go with an onsite treatment system with the groundwater discharge permit similar to what we proposed here for Herring Brook Meadow. This is the outbuilding for that project. Also, in that photograph, is an emergency generator. The church, that isn't just for the outbuilding, that's also for the church itself. They wanted the ability to have emergency power during a type of power outage, so that not only serves the outbuilding, it also serves the church itself. So it's a little bit larger than what you were normally seeing. Okay, next photo.
Can I just copy it? When we get to a building that is really very comparable in size to what's been reported, you want us to know, are they all the same size?
They're pretty much the same size. It'll just want to be a little bit bigger, but it was our, it was our, you wanted to see some similar samples architecturally, so it could be a few feet bigger for what we're proposing here. But we just wanted to show you the architectural residential style of some of the buildings that we were involved in. So this is just looking at it from another view. And the next photo is a little bit larger building, looking more like a little house. And this is the Woodland Development. This is the old Norwell Campgrounds in Norwell, right on Washington Street. That was, that one was constructed, it's still under construction. I don't think all the phases are built out yet, but this probably went out about six years ago, and it's more of a resident, it just shows you they can, how architecturally they can be looked to be more of a residential design. And then the next series of photos are just photographs of what the interior of one of these buildings look like. It holds the electrical panels, the equipment, just the operations of the unit itself for the treatment facility. And we just have about three or four of those photographs. But they're all similar in nature. So from a size standpoint, it's architecturally what you'd want them to look like. They'll be a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller, but these are two of the, I don't know, two of the projects that we were involved in that were out designed. Architects designed the order, the building itself. Easy, just controlled panels, electrical panels, the equipment for running the treatment system itself is all house independent. The mugs as well. But I believe the next photograph is you moving on to the timeline, so I'll turn it back to Jeff. So, I mean, we just wanted to show those images because I think there may have been a little bit of a misconception. It's basically a glorified shed. I mean, it's bigger, obviously, but these are not really large buildings, and the siding, I mean, the trim, the roof, we can make it look like a mini one of our, you know, larger buildings, so, but the size and scope and what's going on inside is consistent with what we showed you. So hopefully that helps people understand a little bit more of what this building's The timeline we submitted, that was a question that was asked. We're not going to go through that. You know, it's text, but hopefully, and I understand members of the board might not have seen it, hopefully it's helpful. I'm sure your council's looked at it or will look at it. But it's basically a chronology of the original permit, key activity associated with that. Number nine, or you can call this one a... Number nine is the, it's the current unit summary table, and that shows the, basically, the sizes of all the units, the buildings, the floors, number of bedrooms, square feet. Once again, it was in the original permit that we submitted, what is it, not January, you know, back in November, but we submitted it again to the record, which shows all the various units and sizes which was requested at the first hearing. Number 10, the stormwater report, which we provided to Woodard and Currents, 150 pages. We did not conclude that in this submittal on Tuesday because it was actually submitted on the 3rd of January. It's voluminous, it's very technical.
I think it's on...
I guess we gave one copy. But Woodard and Currents very much has it. It wouldn't mean much to anybody in this room because it's including myself because it is very technical. So I would suggest, you know, the civil engineers will use that to their benefit. Number 11, we'll...
I'm sorry, yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I did have some, I went through it, and so much of it is what I just, I was just...
Sure.
But I did have some very specific questions as I went through it. Is that something you want to go through your presentation first and then go back to something like that?
You tell me. I mean, it might make sense to answer questions if we tick through, or we can wait to the end, whatever. You guys.
I would say if you want to, like, you got slides up on the topic, we could...
All right. We'll adjust them now. I mean, we obviously don't have any slides on the report, but I let Al and Jeff answer your questions.
Okay, so, so I noted on page three, the first numbered pages, because there's a couple sets of numbered pages. There would, there's a, there's a statement that says flooding which occurs seasonally in the isolated land subject to flooding, flooding will be clearly reduced after the proposed construction compared to existing conditions. So I just wondered if you could kind of explain that? How do you know that? And is there a way, I mean, I can't imagine how you can quantify it, but if it can be quantified, can you kind of speak to that?
Yeah, so I, I think what that's referring to...
Disappease of state of the name due to...
Sure, excuse me. For the record, my name is Jeff Kootrow. I'm with Site Tech Environmental, the site engineers. So this is basically text taken from, a lot of this is repetitive and, you know, what we went through back in the day, but the, the way that the isolated land subject to flooding works, and that's what this is referring to, is the center of the meadow is kind of a bowl shape in the middle of the meadow, and it meets a certain volume. And so in designing this site, there's a development area, and there is an isolated land subject to flooding down radium of the development area. And that bowl is being replicated. Basically, the development area does encroach into that bowl, but the bowl is being relocated out in the meadow, and compensatory storage is being provided. So when we say that the flooding is being reduced with the proposed project, we're saying that the actual isolated land subject to flooding that will be, that will exist after the development is constructed will be actually bigger. And so it's going to provide more flood storage.
Okay. And I'm sure we're going to get into flooding a little bit later in more detail. On page six, you, at the end of the first paragraph, it says, "As an added measure, stormwater management system will be constructed with shut-off valves on all storm drains so stormwater runoff can, can be contained in the unlikely event of a spill." And, you know, I'm sorry, I just, I'm not quite sure what the spill refers to.
Again, that's carried over. We don't anticipate any spill. I don't know what could spill. I suppose, you know, if there was a gasoline spill, that's very unlikely. I mean, there's no, there's no use, there's no reason why that would happen. I think the outlet pipe has a shut-off valve. That's, that's essentially what we're saying. But there is no reason to think that anything would spill and get into the city.
You're going to take the next, you don't anticipate, but that's the reason you have a shut-off valve because there was. So you're talking about a spill on the property itself?
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Like, is that, yes, somebody has car crash and gasoline tank, sorry.
Right. I mean, there is, there is nothing that could happen on this site that wouldn't happen at any other site.
Oh, I'm not super certain, it might be, but...
So, but the stormwater management system has been designed to be able to shut the, shut the discharge into the salt marsh.
And I apologize if it's already been covered in a, there was something in here about the wells. Where is the nearest well to this site?
I believe it's across Route 3A. Somebody might be able to tell me better. It's been, I'm a little rusty on that, actually. I didn't do the groundwater discharge permit, so if you excuse me on that, our sanitary engineer did the groundwater discharge permit. He knows exactly where it is.
Do you know how many feet it is from the side?
I think it's about, I think it's about a mile and a half.
Oh, okay. No.
Is it, is it none?
Frank Fieldhouse, 125, you know, Chief Justice pushing. The nearest town water well, that's what you're speaking about?
Yes.
It's a significant distance, opposite side of 3A. There's a marsh, then there's a barrier with a one-way valve, and then there's fresh water, and then the well. So the well is up near the Blueberry Farm.
Line 123?
Right. The well is up there. That's the closest well.
Line 1.
Yeah, it's a good discussion.
Well, that answers that. And then you have is, you have in your packet the stormwater report. It says 2003 flood map, but it, it lists, it's the flood insurance rate map. Is, I'm kind of a little confused. Is the point where, an outline of where the flood line is, or is there some issue? Are you trying to give us information for flood insurance here?
Well, I, the reason that's included is because, you know, that was the basis for the original floodplain delineation, the 2003, I think, when the original application was submitted, that was the applicable floodplain, and FEMA determines the floodplain. So that shows the limit of the property and then the limit of the floodplain.
Okay. And then I noticed a little tiny thing here on the side, which is this, what the screen is, is not oriented for that. But it, it looks like it reads, and I'm just going to guess the word flood insurance is not available for new construction or substantially improved structures on or after September 16th, and I don't know what year it is, something designated coastal barriers. I mean, I, I think that's, that is potentially a pretty significant point, but I, I'm not sure exactly what that refers to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure within the context of the stormwater management report, but we have a different exhibit. I talked to two very prominent insurance agents in the South Shore, and there's not going to be an issue getting insurance on this development by the association or the owners. I mean, I was pleasantly surprised with the answers I received from those two agents relative to how insurance companies would look at this. So I don't know within the context, I mean, I'll be the first to admit I did not read the 150 pages we studied, but relative to insurance, because that was one of our charges, I did that research myself, and that exhibits and what we provided to you.
Okay.
And that's, and that's based on the current plan and the current flood FEMA line.
Okay, so...
Sorry, yeah, just to, if this project had been conceived of, I don't know, 15 years ago, given where it's located in the floodplain, there would be no, there was no new construction in areas like this at that point. Now, kind of post Sandy and taking a look at it, some controlled construction, there's still just favor of new construction in floodplains, certainly habitable, but there are, and I think Jeff mentioned this at this time, in certain circumstances, you can now, if you build to a certain standard and you meet other requirements, and it still depends if there's discretionary permits, of course, but there's not an absolute prohibition.
Okay.
How the flood insurance may relate to that is, is not something I'm familiar with, but there's, it loosened the range a little bit on some construction within the flood.
So obviously, a concern here would be that whatever might get built was, was going to be built to those specifications, so flood insurance is not prohibited, right?
Well, I, you know, I would rely on the people that are giving out the flood insurance. I think that the cost of that flood insurance may be important to note because it's obviously going to be passed on to the homeowners. It affects not only the affordable unit prices, but, you know, overarching prices and limited dividends and stuff. I'd be more concerned about the affordable unit prices if they're, they're what I'm assuming would be not inexpensive for insurance.
So, so this map that's up here, it, it shows, you've got the property lines in red, and the flood zone, I guess...
That's the old one.
This is the old one. Have you guys provided, I didn't see it.
It's, it's the next one, the next page.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry. I did see that. Play Mark Day. Okay. So did you also, because we had asked last time for an overlay onto, is that somewhere?
That's, that's down there. That's coming, yes.
In the, in Tuesday's submission?
Yes.
Okay, that's why I didn't see it. Okay. Let me see if I have any other question.
Getting back to the valve, shut-off valve, I think I recall why that was put on there. I mean, it's not typical that we do that, but I think it was a concern back 10 years ago, given the sensitive, you know, weapon resource areas that, that be put on there just to be able to shut down the discharge if there was any, anything, any reason why. We would never anticipate that, but I think that's why that's on there.
Well, the number of sources too. I mean, it could be five, it could be, you know, there must be stuff to store on site, could be stuff on site to be, be taken once it's used as well.
Sure.
It's on the highway, you know, I mean, it's, so I, I think that's obviously a good thing. And I think the last, and most of this have been, you know, the last question I have really talks about the maintenance plan of the stormwater management system. And again, I don't know if that's something you want to refer to somebody else at a later time, but that's all the questions I had regarding, you know, that topic. Anybody else?
Thank you. Good evening, Jim Shaleko, I'm the project architect. And at our last hearing, there were comments about what the shadow study might be from the buildings that we're proposing and how we may not impact the neighborhood. So I've done days of three different times of the year, and each of those times of the year, three different times of day. So I might just move over here to see which one is up there. So this is the spring equinox, which is effectively identical to the autumnal, the autumn equinox. So at 9:00 AM, this, these aerial photographs are basically with north to the top of the sheet, and therefore the sun is rising on this side and coming around the site to there. So at 9:00 in the morning, spring equinox, you're seeing the penetration of the shadow does not make it to the property, to the north. And obviously, the neighbors to the south are, to the south, and so shadows are not going in that direction at this time of the year. Then at noon, the shadow is obviously at the lowest possible. The sun is the highest in the sky, and if you can slide over, if it's possible. 2:00 C, 3:00 PM, the shadows are still, are not, so at spring equinox and all the way through until winter, there are no shadows leaving our site.
What height, what height is that based on?
Our buildings.
Our buildings. But there wasn't, that wasn't specified the last time we met. It hadn't been clarified.
So these are...
It's not 3D?
These are...
Some of that we'll get to from the audience, so, but kind of...
You don't know that, that this is meaningless.
Well, these are 3D models that I contested the fact have been drafted and created to the presentation. We had elevations that showed the height, and it was at those heights. So in the summer, obviously, the shadows are very tiny, and I don't think there are really any issues to discuss unless someone needs further explanations of that. The winter sunrise is probably an hour before this photograph, and then on the last several hours after. Here, the shadows are the longest. Here, the shadows make it into this tree line, but they won't cast any more shadow than the trees that are existing on our property and on the local property. It is possible that there is a low tree in here someplace, and that a shadow at 9:00 in the morning on the shortest day of the year, where the sun is the lowest of the whole year, that there may be a shadow there for a half hour. On paper, I can't be that accurate to know what each tree is on other people's property, but it appears to me that this would be the only time during the whole year at 9:00 AM that perhaps a shadow for a small time would make it past those trees, but I actually don't. The rest of the time, the sun is on our property.
Is it possible to lower the left pitch?
Before you do that, you can see the trees that I'm talking about and the shadows that they are casting in what is obviously summertime, those, those big trees. So not having the benefit of going up to the miserable tree, I took worst case scenario, which is that the shadow would be right there adjacent to that house, again, on the shortest day of the year for a very small period of time. Any other questions on the shadows, Jeff? We should go back, we should go back?
Of course.
I look at that 133, which would be right across the street from this. I'm just wondering if you could project that earlier in the day? Like, sunrise is still like an hour or two out for sunrise.
But in December, the shadow could go higher.
I understand.
But this is really, it is the standard of our industry anyway to use these times of the day, knowing that a car can cast extremely low shadow right after sunrise. So I think that 9:00 AM on December 20th is... So, I think that 9:00 AM on December 20th is a fair time to do it. I should say, if we could go back to summer, so summer, the, at sunset, it would not surprise me that the shadow would start to come on to our neighbor to the south's property, but not to the house. Any other questions on that? There's already a lot of other questions.
I know. That's so important. Is that 13?
13. So, I did a memo to try to understand this site, the floodplain, from a construction standpoint, what regulations, what codes are in place to regulate how you build upon this site? So, we can see a couple of the floodplain panels. Okay, this is, you're headed there for a moment. Bear with us, please.
Is that in any of the packets that you provided to us today?
Yes, yes, the Tuesday package. The engineers think about how they will view the site conditions. Architects think about if it is allowed and if the engineering works, what do the state, federal, and professional codes have to say about how to build? The first thing to do is to ascertain what sort of zone are you in? This, that's the best part. So, the blue, which is about 3,000 feet from our developing area, is the extreme inland line of velocity zone. There are lots of types of flooding. There's flooding that is with waves that have energy in them, and so you have damage both from just what water does to buildings and the wave, what it can do to the building. So, we are not in a B zone. This site over here is 3,000 feet from the B zone. The next area is the limit of moderate waves. The federal government FEMA creates these firm maps, federal insurance break maps, that they effectively describe, if you get a chance to look at the presentation, there's a description of each element of this drawing showing what it means and what it is, and that dovetails with the state building code. The state of Massachusetts adopted the international building code as of January 1st, 2018. It's a very specific code. Massachusetts has 100 pages of amendments, and refers to all kinds of professional practices for where you can fill, where you can't fill, when you fill, how will you do it, what is the degree of slope, how compacted is it, what kind of materials do you use, how deep do those materials go? It is exhausting, seven or eight hundred pages of what you would do in each of these zones. I've built homes in these zones, those are the zones that you have breakaway panels. It is understood that what you're saying, you can't put anything solid in the way, because that wave may reverberate from someone else. We are well past that. The only zone that we're adjacent to is the, when I read here, coastal barriers resource system, and that's adjacent to, not, our site is not even in that zone. So, the only zone that we are in, as much of situation is in a AE zone. They say AE when they know, scientists think they know their computer and observations, what the height of the water's going to be. Just an A zone means, well, we're not sure, we're going to make some assumptions. If it's an AE, in this case, AE 16, it used to be 11, it was 13, nothing changed, but approach became conservative. Floods were happening frequently, and the federal government decided to change my office in Martha's Lane and this area situated to almost the identical elevation, 16 or 17. I've been there for 40 years, and if it were that high in my office, the water would be as high, it's never made it to the threshold. Storms that we've had then make me a believer. So, we are designing this building to meet the current elevation 16, for all kinds of technical reasons, it's actually 16.8, and we've rounded that up to 17. We're assuming that in worst case scenario, 100-year storm, the computers says it could happen, and we are required to design to that. And so, if you can see that number, this whole area is in AE 16, as are some of the homes on Martha's Lane, as is the home to Noah. We have a special requirement, we're asking for a building permit in 2018, and I thought some of the hundreds of pages of regulations are on, that we will have to abide by in order to get a building permit. Nothing that we do tonight, nothing that we do in these hearings, nothing that this board approves if they decide to, relieves us from the requirement to still do all that from the state building code, state. Are there any questions about these maps, floodplain, velocity?
Just a question, yes. So, what's the first floor elevation then?
So, our elevation, because we chose way out, elevation 23. So, we're six feet out of the, above the, seven feet, six feet above the floodplain.
Are there any mechanicals?
Enough, the first floor, enough.
Or nothing above the line?
Only the cars, the only thing in the basement are cars and the trash. So, we're going to have to deal with, you know, what do we do with trash when there's storms coming? Those are spelled out in the documents, spelled out in the state code, spelled out in the international building code that parking is allowed. It's important to know that it's not just allowed, you can't have the water come in and be trapped, and that people might be in there. So, our elevation is 12 for the garage. The land on the water side can't be any higher than 11, so that right after high tide, remember these numbers are all just high tide numbers, an hour later, the water has started to come out of the building. So, the land on the whole backside has two sides of your garage, have to be lower than the garage, so that after high tide, the water recedes. If the storm lasts for several tides, it will come in and it will go out. So, so the garage, yes, if we had that sort of storm, would flow. Do you want to?
All right, just one question on the garage. There's no mechanical system in the garage? Water roll, 15 Martha's Lane?
Thank you. You raised everything up to the first floor elevation 23, way above the flood. All the pipes that coming from below, from above, offset that water, the garage ceiling, are on the ceiling, and then going out underground above the flood.
What about lighting? There's no lighting in the garage?
Yes, but they're on the ceiling at 22, well above. I think it would be, there are lots of discussions about what you might do, waterproof things. It seemed to be not worth the risk to put anything electrical. Then at elevation 16.
No sanitary lines or anything like that on the bottom of the elevator?
Again, picture of the, well, the bathrooms above, they're all coming to the ceiling of the garage, and then offset up at around 20, 20 feet below that.
And to bring it back to the insurance question, that was actually a question both insurance agents asked, what do you have in the garage? Do you have any chemicals, do you have any electrical? And they were very happy, and maybe happy is not the right word, but thought it was strategically prudent, designed it the way we had, because all we have is basically concrete, and their cars will park, you know, nothing, you know, that can get damaged by a little electrical or plumbing or anything like that, so.
Can you just remind me, is it, is it an open area, the garage, or is it, there are, are there outside walls?
So, on that backside, as I just said, is required to be open. So, yes, there will be piers, looking for something, it's probably a pier that's this wide, this deep, so that would not obstruct any water that came in here that needed to leave after high tide. So, two sides, the backside to the north and to the east have to be open, or else we would be capturing water, and that's now.
So, it's like an open air garage?
Just say it on the backside.
If you could just say your name, please, and that, just for the record. Thank you.
Michaela Kilduff, 125 Chief Justice Cushing Highway. So, to set curiosity, are two of the sides of the underground garage open?
Yes.
So, you could just walk in?
No, I'd be trespassing on the property, but you mean, could someone walk in the garage? Probably could find your way into the garage, yes. We have a little bit of a slope.
Thank you.
But you're correct with the rocks.
Can it be open? Can it be?
Our drawings show breakaway panels, our drawings show some horizontal, yet to be designed slats.
Right.
For aesthetics.
So, it's not, if you were looking at it from the metal side, it's not, I think, wide open as you're visualing, like you see all the cars. It could have panels or perforations or something that meets the characteristics of open, but it's not like.
It's open to the waterfall.
Right, but it's not just like, hey, well, it's not visually, right, not visually, that's a better way to describe it.
Thank you.
We're on the same agenda, we got a couple of questions.
You're planning on putting 70 cars?
I know.
Bus lane 133, you're planning on putting 70 cars under the building? Is that correct?
Well, that's the number of cases.
Where would they go if you needed to remove them during a flood?
We've designed auxiliary area out of the floodplain, would be like a grass brick paper that can support the load. So, in a flood event, we would be able to accommodate all 70 cars and then move them back during that event. That was on the site, that was something the town requested prior to this, you know, permitting process even.
Kathy, don't you question Randy? You submitted this report on January 3rd?
The stormwater, not this exhibit, the stormwater management report, we submitted on the 3rd of January. This exhibit, we just submitted on Tuesday.
Okay, so on January 4th, situated, it's documented, had 15 and a half feet tide, and so we know automatically right now that anything that was, we haven't had that kind of a tide prior to. So, we know that there'd be 3 and a half feet of water in the garage on January 4th, if the tide calculations from the, from Noah are correct?
Not sure where those were taken and.
Well, we, I think we have a lot of pictures, the people in the area have submitted pictures to the board showing what we had, all of our yards had far more flooding than we've ever had before, so we can pretty well tell you with pictures that that was the case. And what we're concerned about is, though, that water's trapped in the garage.
Not trapped. That's the whole idea of the design. It's not trapped, it enters the garage, but then it flows right back.
Well, like say on January 4th, what happened, that because of all the ice that was there, there was a tremendous amount of ice that moved with that tide into that area. So, we can't assume that there was a second tide, as you mentioned, or a third tide, that the water's able to leave, and that's some previous storms, the issues where the tides came in, and because the subsequent tides came beyond, behind it, they weren't able to drain. So, we were wondering what the system was going to be to, just assuming that the tide would just wash out, drive the garage, maybe we ought to look at that more seriously because of what we have now seen on January 4th.
Right, I think that this is a very serious thing, something that we take seriously. Those problems are probably overall area, but mostly in the velocity zone, is the velocity zone and waves that can move. Yes, I appreciate the fact that on this site, neighbors adjacent to it had water, but I doubt it's altogether possible. If it was at elevation 15, then it was flooding the houses.
Michael, 11, Martha's Lane. So, talking about all this, going back a little bit to the stormwater plan, the isolated land subject to flooding, I just had a couple of questions on that. And your engineer from SciTech, you stated how there is a bowl currently there, how he's going to replicate that. I'm just wondering if they relooked at the area for the isolated subject to flooding one, because I know that when, that was originally determined, that delineation was that question, and that's when the enforcement order came into play, and that enforcement order allowed the land to sit until it could naturally restore itself. There were different opinions as to how long that should be. I know Massachusetts Conservation, the Massachusetts Conservation agent Alexandra, I can't find her name, at the time thought it was 20 years, but even if we were to do it now, the land has sat for approximately 10 years, would that change? And because that basin certainly isn't going to hold that amount of water, the bowl that he's speaking of. And we know, we live adjacent to it, on that storm on January 4th, there was three to five feet of water in that field. So, there's no way that basin, you know, that basin that's currently there. So, I guess it's, have multiple questions going on there.
Well, I think what they spoke about earlier, that volume in the metal that exists today is going to be relocated to a different portion of the site with a larger volume, or bowl to hold more water. I feel, if I remember wrong, but that's what I understood they were talking about earlier in the presentation.
Right, so that's what I'm questioning now, because the entire metal, wet metal, was completely flooded with water going all the way to 3A. So, I'm wondering where this bowl is that's going to hold more water than currently exists, than it currently holds? Doesn't hold any water, there's not a bowl where it catches when the tide goes back out, then there's a bowl that keeps water from leaving, but the water that's coming in overflows far beyond that. And I think that the person that represented from SciTech, I think that you came up and you did a video that showed that a few years back, when we went through this process before. He had a video of the tremendous amount of water, there was no bowl or basin that was catching water and holding it.
Can we go over that situation again, just to clarify?
Alan Breakmeyer from SciTech Environmental again, and I was the one taking the video. Gloria waved to me from the bathroom or deck. The video, what the video showed was that when the water comes off of Martha's Lane and that area flows onto our property, there's a cut in the stone wall and the water drains from Martha's Lane, Gloria's property onto our property, where there is a low spot, for lack of a better description, in the field. That low area has a specific volume to it. Once it fills up so much, I believe the elevation's 7.4, it overflows and goes into First Herring Brook. So, what we've done is we, as we previously did, we calculated out the volume of storage that's stored on our property, and as, and on this plan, we've made sure that that same volume, a little bit more, is replicated on our property, so there isn't any less storage volume than what currently exists today. And there's a little bit less flow because we're aiming it out, our property is now discharging more of our flow directly out to First Herring Brook, so it's, it's a two for. We have a little bit less flow going to that on our property. But the majority of the flow that floods on there is coming off from, off of our property, from upstream properties. And I would just have to question the water flowing out onto three A. I wasn't aware that three A was closed at all at First Herring Brook. If our property's pretty high up there at that corner, the water, I'm not aware of three A flooding during the storm. So that's just, just a question on my part. But the key is, the field has a definite volume to it. Once that volume fills up, it overflows into First Herring Brook. On the proposed drawings, we're providing a little bit greater volume in the field for that storage.
If I just may, I think that it was proven, sir, during the last Herring process, that the water flows into that meadow from three different places. And it does flow in from behind my property, from the Herring Brook, through, through that area onto, and on yours, and from the, the end where the Herring River is, where the proposed bridge was before, flows in there, and then it flows in from just before the culvert on three A as well. I just wanted to correct that. So it's not water that's flowing in from my property onto yours. It's a natural basin and it flows in from three different areas and it floods that entire property. I believe that that was proven last time.
And the, just as, if I may.
And we didn't say it went onto three A, just that it went up to three A.
So it went up to three A, it was flooding out First Herring Brook crossing.
And it was. We have pictures of it. We can document that.
Okay. It'd be good to see. But regardless, the, the key here is, the meadow area has a specific volume of storage. And we are providing more storage in the meadow than what currently exists.
And also, just to follow, these documents that he's providing, the volumes, will be inspected by our engineer as well and reviewed. So if there's any questions that he has, definitely come up again, and we'll have a look at that also.
And have they redetermined the isolated land subject to flooding? Are they going off of the old numbers that you have?
If you could explain that a little bit.
Gloria, it looks like, it looks like those delineations are the same as they were away based on the plan.
They are.
They haven't been updated.
So they haven't been updated.
I don't think they've been recalculated. I don't think anything's been redelineated or reshopped since the last, based on the plan. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's, that's correct. No one's been out there filling the elevation seven point four. Where it overflows is still elevation seven point four.
And just one clarification, you mentioned on the directions, we're usually speaking of the storm events. And when storm events come to the area, it's a northeast storm that drives the water in. And that's why we talked about the water being driven onto that property.
Right.
When it's driven onto that property, it then exits over the Holstein and on the houses on Martha's Lane, out to the lowlands to the south. So it's not, it goes from Martha's Lane. The storms don't come from the south, they come from the northeast. That's how that water's driven. We're to the north of your property and we can show how all the icebergs, everything is all driven down that way. And that's, and that whole field is a big retention abeyment for that storm-driven water. So I think that, I think that's a little bit of a clarification. We're talking about a storm event, driven water coming from the north, not some rainwater maybe coming from the south occasionally.
And I would agree with that. And I would say we don't control the ocean. That's the ocean coming in.
It's a north, it's a north, the water is driven from the north, not the south.
Yeah, we're, why don't we go to, why don't we go to the eighteen guys? The new site versus the old site, the overlay?
Now, Jeff, could you take advantage of that screen? Because that's really small. We've got a big screen, let's use it.
Yeah. I don't think we can get it any bigger than that, unfortunately.
Oh, sure. And you have to move it back.
Yeah. No. Thank you.
Make it as big as you can, please.
I mean, the fact of the matter is, even if it was the size of the wall, I mean, the nature of the exhibit, it's complicated.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of lines, there's multiple buildings sitting on top of each other. So admittedly, it's probably best reviewed right in front of me, with the opportunity to. And I don't know if the exhibit, I mean, there's certain things you can take away from the exhibit, or basically, it was something that you asked us to provide.
Right. And this is what you provided on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay. So where on this large carpet, in your jacket?
Everybody, well, exhibit, uh, it's.
Do you have it? I'll just look at other cameras. Just going to take you to on the front. But I'm respectful, I'm not the only one I'm sure wants to see this.
So what, what this exhibit does is it shows the approved plan, and then it shows our plan, superimposed. So you can compare the building location.
This is the original approved plan.
The six, the unit plan that was litigated.
Right.
Yeah.
Just so it's clear.
That's the, right, really the plan of record compared to our proposed plan. Do you have any? Jim, do you have relation? Maybe you can kind of.
Yeah, he said reverse, sixteen.
All right. So our, yeah, I have to say it from the reverse. So the black, here's one of our buildings, a connection, and building two. And then this is previous plan. That's one building. That's the second building, which basically exists almost where ours does. And then you have this whole building over here where we have nothing, right? Now we have, you know, a septic field, community garden, meadow, you know, this is all open. Also, it's not as clear, as shown here, is this is all pavement in the previous plan. This is all pavement in the previous plan, pavement. So not only is it showing the buildings in comparison to ours, but it's showing the, you know, the pervious area, or impervious, I should say. Well, pervious, yeah, impervious. So our parking area is right here, the exterior parking area, compared to this whole lot, this whole lot, this is the whole parking lot. This is the big parking lot. The entrance is a little bit different. I don't know if there's any other key.
Set mark, you know, the septic wasn't.
Septic is more or less in the same area, Jeff, and I'm more or less same area. The septic in the previous plan, largely, a lot of it was under the parking lot. We don't have, and for the gentleman that asked the question about the auxiliary parking, it basically you kind of go, you can see it, the outline, right here is where that auxiliary parking would go. You can see the outbuilding for the sewage treatment plant, more or less in the same area. There was here, ours shifted just a little bit.
Do you have another, do you have another plan, the floodplain superimposed over all of this?
We have, we have, we've submitted multiple exhibits that show the floodplain. I mean, I would put, I would direct you to thirteen. Also, twenty-one and twenty-two, Jeff, doing our cut and fill analysis, did that show the floodplain?
Yeah.
Yeah. Exhibit twenty-one and twenty-two, yeah, you have one of those that shows the floodplains. We, well, we'll walk you through it. We have a documentary that we can see. All right, Jim, why don't we go to nineteen twenty, so that reminds yourself a little bit better? So we were asked a couple things, on time specifically, for an elevation, which is actually, well, I'll let Jim explain what this is, but.
This is a section elevation, our building that's closest to the south property line, subway property line, and the Nate.
Gloria, not Gloria.
That would be your house. And we don't have a survey that goes that far, so we take some approximations as to exactly what the height and first floor of your house is. But here's the property line, here's the elevation, this red dotted line is elevation eight. That's important because that's the existing elevation right at the property line. And we're not disturbing that.
Martha Klein?
Yes, Ms..
One forty-six to the north, do you have a picture of the elevation to the north?
Well, I haven't finished with this yet, but no.
Elevation eleven.
This is the only section that we're done thus far.
Well, okay. We're at elevation eleven, sir. First floor is elevation.
So I assumed.
If you speak, just say your name, raise your hand, just so we can identify it, that it comes on the speaker, so we can know who it is.
Sorry. Gloria didn't.
Yeah.
He said he wasn't sure of the elevation of the first level of the house until eleven.
Thank you. And so here is elevation twelve, and that's what I put you at the first floor, so I went, didn't guess too many. So elevation twelve, as you probably heard, is the elevation of our garage. So as to modify what that looks like, we're building a stone wall here, about ten feet away from the building. And you can see in the next picture that's done by the landscape architect, just before we go back. So, but these are the hard lines of what's happening. It is existing. We're sloping up toward this stone wall, filling against our building so that you're not looking at a garage. And remember, we talked about the fact that the land on the east needs to be slightly lower than the garage. This also shows those breakaway panels that I was talking about, that we had an image of that. So there are horizontal panels up at six feet, so that you won't see the cars, but the water can still come and go. Then the landscape architect took this diagram of the proposed elements and added the existing tree that's in that area, together with other plantings that she intends, both on the lower level adjacent to the building, and to mitigate the view of the building from the south. Also, when related to these issues, the building itself steps down considerably in that area from a massive state.
Just to, to sort of reiterate, there's garage area under both buildings, correct?
Yeah. It's actually one continuous group.
Okay.
Connects, connects under the meadow.
We were, I think we were correcting, if I'm wrong, but I think we were asked specifically to do this elevation because it was closest, it was the closest point of our building to our other residential.
Thank you.
So this is the perspective that anyone who was here last time saw, a professional renderer did this, but didn't do that in the way of adding the bushes and trees that the landscape architect had put on our landscape plan that was submitted last time. She then took this, Katie, Kenny, took this plan and added both in the, please proceed. So this will be a winter view with the new trees and bushes that she is proposing at our driveway. This, if I keep, I think we can just keep moving, it's all pretty obvious. In the summer, I'm sorry. So in the summertime, our building will be seen through a lot of trees. Yes, thank you. And then from the south, this is what both buildings would look like, that little connector, you can't quite see it, it's effectively underground, but underground connects those two points. And these are all existing trees that Katie is suggesting thinning out some of the dead wood, so to speak, and then adding other plantings in the south. This is a similar picture to the first one that we looked at, but it shows the existing trees along the highway and from across the street, and then other vegetation that Katie is suggesting, seen in the winter and in the summer. The thing that's in effect, it's true, same buildings in all of those pictures, it is extremely accurately represented in the 3D modeling. And it's not, you know, you used to do artist renderings in the old days and you did your best. Now you have to punch in the exact size of it, the exact height of the peak. They are proven to be accurate 3D models.
Quick question. Natoning by Martha's Lane, so I'm going to direct a butter to the septic site from the south. Do you have a picture of landscaping or any type of screening that you would do from that property to my property?
So you have to do.
I haven't done anything landscape architect, that's the thing. Yeah, we, we could do that for you. I know what towns do are. And, and let me ask Kate to walk you through some imagery and some other things. There's, there's a good amount of fairly mature trees in that part of the property.
But that's kind of on my property.
Right. So, right. So relative to screening and stuff, we can endeavor to show you that.
And I think because you're using it as a parking site as well.
No, I, I really don't, don't, it might get used as a parking site.
You just mentioned that earlier, yeah.
Once or twice a year for a day. So I wouldn't characterize it as a parking lot.
But I would just make a suggestion, maybe you could put up a fence or something. I know currently in the town bylaws, I think it's seven seventy dot six dash F. There should be a fence and there should be some screening on the other side of it. So I think that just as a suggestion.
Well, how about this, a fence along the property line?
Yeah.
Because that would be, that would probably be preferred. I thought you meant a fence around the parking area.
No, no, no.
Oh, that property, let me get you to talk to you about that.
Some screening with some trees on your side of the property.
Absolutely. I misunderstood.
I just, one other question on the landscaping. I'm assuming that a lot of the trees are going to be added, mature, old trees and that. And that would be the current look, if you can see?
Well, the.
Is that ten years out of the road?
No, well, the front, along three A.
At least the new trees, right.
Most of that, and the people in this room knows this better than I do, along the property line, along the front edge, there's a lot of growth. I mean, a lot, some of it is kind of crappy and stuff on our site, but some of it is quite nice. All of that is staying. So there's a natural buffer between three A and our property. And, and these are actual photographs. Now granted, we've, we've, you know, some of the, the summer views, there's additional, additional plantings, but I would say most of the really big stuff we're planting is going to be in there. This, what this is more accurately representate, representing is during the spring and summer seasons, these trees are green and have leaves and are bigger.
And that's winter.
And that's winter. So we're not planning on really planting anything along three A. I mean, maybe a couple things, you know, along our entrance, but it's pretty mature and pretty dense as it is. So most of the plantings will occur on the interior of property. And I would suggest these plantings are important because, you know, they screen us from three A and they screen the passersby from, from. And I would suggest these plantings are, are important because, you know, they screen us from three A and they screen the passersby from, from our property, so...
Should I just be again asking another question for a whole time, but I'm not listening. The screening that you were talking about bringing along my property line to yours, um, the wall and, um, the solid panels, are they solid panels? Is there anything that's going to allow for the drainage, the stormwater drainage that runs off of where your seasonal parking lot is, in septic system area, because that runs downhill? And is there any type of drainage where that wall is going to be, so that stormwater can still flow in its natural...
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what version of the plan is. I mean, there was a swale added along that full, um, length of the property line to be east of, I guess we'll call it the malicious lot, and running to the north, actually, uh... So all the runoff's coming down off of, of, of the, the septic fields, and then further east is going to be collected through a swale and run to the north and kept in the stormwater management system. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. See this right here? This line right here is a swale, and so the runoff from this grass area and, uh, tree area is basically going to be collected, and there's going to be a swale that directs the storm, the stormwater runoff from that whole area into the stormwater management system, and it'll just enter the pipes, the storm drains, and be treated like runoff from the pavement. And be directed around the building and out to the saltwater.
Yeah, this might actually be a question, one of my questions, um, with respect to, uh, snow that is plowed, where, where do you anticipate to store that?
For the, for the next hearing, we'll give you a snow storage plan, but I would say we, we don't have much pavement, and it's not going to be hard to find an area on the site to, to use, um, where the parking's covered. Yeah, all the parking's under the building, so we have the auxiliary, we have, not the auxiliary, we have the, oh, our surface parking and the roadway and the entrance into the garage, all of that needs to be paved, not paved, but plowed. But in the grand scheme of things, when you look at that in relation to, I mean, for instance, you know, that area's all open, this entire area is open, we have areas here and here that are open. So it's a good question, and it's a question that frequently gets asked. We'll look at it and we'll provide a definitive snow storage plan.
Right, because you can't store snow on a space where you anticipate emergency parking. I mean, think about what happened a couple weeks ago, and you move all those cars and then you have snow on the ground. You can't be parking cars where you've been dumping snow.
Right, well, I don't think we'll need to put it on that area, because, uh, there's plenty of, that's way down the list and things in terms of, you know, that are, are going to be challenging. Snow storage plan.
Thank you.
You want to talk really quickly, Jeff, about the...
We've got about ten minutes.
All right, well, we, we did, we, we...
We told you all the questions.
One question that we have got asked a lot, I mean, if you don't, we can talk, it's the cut and fill and some of that stuff, if you don't... You know, we can talk about it the next year, and I don't want to...
Yeah, I think that's... I don't think we're going to be able to cover that.
All right, well, we submitted it, Wood and Current will probably, a lot of these exhibits, I wasn't, I didn't necessarily say this, I'm sure your council would know, but they're going to be interested in some of these exhibits, some of the exhibits, and I don't care anything about it, but cut and fill analysis, some of the other things, so I would suggest, and we, we've been in touch giving them drop boxes and stuff, so they'll, they'll have, they have all this, uh, so I would suggest they'll look at this, and then we'll probably can talk about it the next year.
We'll probably have a few more questions soon.
Kathy Donahue, Cushing, Lanning, one of the questions we had asked for, uh, asked to have you represent for us at this meeting was the view of the buildings from the north and the east, um, because that's the big change in it. Your buildings, you only have two buildings, but your two buildings compared to the previous, but your two buildings now are far, are far greater mass to the north and the east, and that's where most of the community is going to see your building, not from a quick ride on three A, and we had asked for you to give us that, uh, view line and show us how the building was going to be, be shown, so you showed the east, and you showed the south, and that looked good, you showed the west, and that looked good, but we needed to see the north.
For the back of the building?
The big, the big back, because it's one giant garage with two buildings and a, and a patio in between them. And I think that's the biggest concern of how that, you know, I think we mentioned the driftway, the people around the rivers and everything like that. That's what most people are going to see, because that's your biggest view. And also then, I don't know if the lighting plan was mentioned, but I know that light pollution on the marsh is considered a major concern for many.
Right, I, I, I mean, I, I think we would be comfortable saying we'll live with, you know, what the lighting requirements are under the existing bylaws, so...
They had, they had been very limited on the Haringburg Mall that was built, uh, years ago, they had to put a berm, and, uh, they put trees, and they lowered all the lighting to be very low in the parking lot so as to, uh, protect the environment of the marshland. So they, we have a, we have a precedent of what was requested and done in that area.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's certainly a detail we can talk about. I, I don't think, you know, after talking my head, we're probably going to have any lighting on the rear of the building.
I think the building itself is lit.
Well, people have the right within their units to have lights on, but I think that'll be the only lighting, because we don't have a lot of room between the back of the building and the marsh, relative to the front of, what I'll call the front of the building. You know, we'll have low, kind of the high, high halves and stuff like that. Maybe we'll have a gas, you know, something, uh, more coastal, if we needed a, a gas light type of one. But we, we don't, I mean, we want this to be subtle and attractive, we don't want it to be Las Vegas, so, you know, we'll, we're, we're not planning on much illumination.
Okay, would you be able to give us that north, as we have requested, the north and east plans of, as you had...
Yeah, I think we have an elevation, so we can provide that, we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay, and the depiction of vegetation?
Uh, yeah, I think we have that too, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Matt Honing, by Martha Lane, I just have one question, when I was looking at the plan set you just had up there, it looks like the septic is very far away from the buildings that you're building and very kind of close to my house. Um, is it possible to kind of split the distance between the entrance and the southern property line? See how it's kind of just tucked in the corner near three A in the south? Where you've got all this space between driveway entrance, or is that just there for a reason?
Yeah, so, uh, entrance to the southern area for, for the septic field, um, we did a series of test pits years and years ago, and, you know, the location is specific to the soils that were observed, um, so...
Are you going to move that north?
I mean, in addition to having that field, there's also a, a area for a reserve field, and then, so that, you know, it is set up specifically to be there. I mean, it's, it's going to be a grass field, it's not, it's going to be under the ground, you're not going to see it.
And just feel like you tucked it as far away, the buildings to your building as possible?
It is meeting the, uh, property line setbacks, I mean, that, that is what it is, but I mean, it's, it does meet the setbacks, and, you know, like I said, it's not even raised, it's, it's completely under the ground.
Yeah, Frank Kilduff, one twenty-five, Chief Justice Cushing. Actually, I have three questions. Uh, first, we didn't address this evening maximum height of the buildings. Is that something that we can anticipate we'll hear more about in the future?
Yes.
Uh, the second question is, are all the materials that are presented to the board by the applicant available for the public to view?
They will be.
You know, but once we get it, by taking the age, we're getting ready, there's enough copies to...
So is that something that perhaps a week before the next meeting, that we could anticipate that would be available to us?
Uh, again, it depends on we get them, once, once we get them, usually we, you, we drew them first, or then we make them available, or...
Right, if they're available, anyway, there's a file, right?
So once, once they're filed, they're available.
Right, so we don't, we don't know what's coming, how many, so if I call the, the, the board, how do I know what's going to be addressed in the next meeting is actually available?
It's really, when the documents become available, they're on file in, with the building department, and they're available for you to come in and view.
Yeah.
And so when we say they're available, that's what we mean.
Are they dated on, on arrival, so that if I call and say, have you, anything since this time, you've got it?
Yes.
Okay. The third question I have is, is it possible to get, uh, a sense of elevation with the elevation that you need to make your driveway, um, equal to the elevation of three A here? And as your driveway curls around in the virtue? Are you planning on keeping that all filled right to the edge of the property adjacent, or will there be a slope near the adjacent property?
So, uh, you're asking, uh, that might be a plan.
I can't, I haven't, I haven't seen it on any, any, um, I had a question.
Uh, I think it might be, the plan was, I'm going to try to see, that's what we'll probably discuss in the next meeting, well... I think he'd ask you about the slope.
Right, the slope between your northern border of your property and the adjacent two homes. I just, I can't get a sense of that, because if you, if you... At the last, at the last meeting, the engineer spoke and said that the driveway was actually going to be above the elevation of roof three A, and unless I misunderstood. So the question I have is what kind of sloping is going to occur up in that corner between the project and the adjacent homes?
So as you pull it and take the left down the driveway, go to the parking lot. Again, to the left side, after that, that's the elevation you'll pull.
So that's overmeet the elevation, same as your, as your garage? Then as you go north from that driveway into the adjacent property, how much does it slop in?
I thought, I, I can't actually see the, uh, the elevations because maybe I'm off, but I believe the elevation right at the entrance, uh, where you would enter the, the site, is around elevation seventeen, and, uh, the entrance has been graded in such a way to, you know, basically not allow runoff from roof three A to enter the site and not be directing any runoff from the site under roof three A.
So these...
So it's crowned.
Are these numbers indicating elevation?
Yes, yeah, yes.
So after your fifty, forty, thirty, so there'll be a fairly steep slope?
Yes.
Right at the edge of your property?
Not, not right at the edge, it's just above your own street range.
So the, is it, there's a retaining wall, but it's, it's not a big retaining wall, um, it runs parallel to the driveway. The slope, uh, of the, the street, between, a link between the street and the retaining wall is relatively flat.
Sorry, I would actually, may I make, look, may I make a suggestion? If you would be kind enough to put your questions or concerns in writing, we will most certainly give you a technical response to those questions, if you'd like to know about it.
Send right to email.
The board? Probably through the board, as we do it, through the board, and we'll get, we'll get an answer back to you through the board, but I think what you're asking is technical and I think easily answered, so take the opportunity to ask about approximate heights of retaining walls and grades and any other concerns, and we can get back to you with how that area will be, will work from a grading standpoint.
Okay.
So just to follow up.
Yeah, let me just follow up on the next meeting, and, but we get some information on the grading plan that, uh, we spoke about, and also the lighting plan and, uh, the north elevation, Kathy spoke about.
Yeah, and I'm, and, and for the board's understanding, to be quite candid, and this will help us out getting things in on time, we don't expect a big, you know, an additional big submission on our part. There's a couple things that we all, we understand, but it's not going to be like it was for this hearing, because I think we've given you a lot, there's been some things we've heard tonight, a couple trickle items, but I would surmise our next meeting will focus mostly on what, what are the currents and the health issues of our project, unless some offages or not.
That's the idea.
Yeah, we, we may have some more questions.
Yeah, we have.
We probably attacked one more before we...
I have more comment, Westland, one thirty-three. My biggest concern is safety. This is a narrow stretch of three A, it's fifty miles an hour in both directions. There's a passing zone southbound which ends about the marshland. The passing zone starts at about Neilgate Street northbound, which puts my property and the entrance to this property in a blind spot, and it's just, these people that are going to try and enter this property head itself are going to be slowing down and then potentially stopping in the middle of the road, with people coming over the hill, potentially in both sides of the road. I've been involved in an accident there, I've seen a lot of close calls, I've had to pull up on my neighbor's property for cars coming head on. I was passed by a Citroen Cruiser going northbound as I'm about to take a left into my property. It's a very bad, anyone that's, um, on the roadway in front of Kennedy's Gardens, you can put a school bus in front of my property and not see it. There's going to be something bad happen there if something's not done with the speed or the passing zone, with anything that goes on there.
At this point, uh, did you... No, Sarah, it looked like she was about to ask you a question.
I was, I was, so, so, and, and I think everybody's interested. Uh, so the next step is Woodman Current's going to take this up and do their analysis. Has anybody spoken to them to...
Yes.
Okay, and, and what, how much time do they need?
I don't, don't know for sure, so John, I've been keeping John in the loop of all those, he's getting a lot of my annoying emails back and forth. We worked out the, the scope, um, working through deposits with, with, with Jeff, and I think they're good to go. There was just like a little bit of contractual review for their peer review at, at the town administrator's office, but they just had a bunch of conversations with Dan Garson, who was familiar with the project from last time, and Jeff Sterns, and just get them up to speed on the things that they're going to do. I, I fully expect that they should have something for us.
When? I mean, again, I, you know, I, I, I just find it really awful to get these things two days before, I just, I don't have the time.
Sarah, I, I, I can't answer this, I think some of that is going to be dependent, my guess is, what I'd love to do is, as soon as they get fully onboard contractually, is that, um, they have the ability to converse back and forth, which I'm assuming is perfectly fine with, uh, SciTech, so that they can start getting questions answered. Um, I don't know if in this initial review, if they'll have full conclusions or more questions than answers, or a combination of the both, but I, and, and, and until we really get them rolling, I, I don't know.
Well, and obviously the question on that is because when, when do we schedule the next meeting?
I, I would say normally a, a four-week stretch is, should, should be enough. I mean, they're, they have all the existing data from two thousand eight, my guess is there'll also be questions on what's happened between two thousand eight and now. They, the storm, uh, water report is probably derivative in some respects from two thousand eight. They have some of the other analysis to do, but they're not doing traffic, I mean, there's only the things that are affected by the, the new floodplain and the new design and the stormwater and the roof reconfiguration, so my guess is it's not, wouldn't take as long as even as normal. Of course, there are some complications considering the impact of the floodline change, but nothing they haven't seen before, so...
So you think we're safe?
I mean, are you... I don't know, but what is, what is the board's next meeting? Four weeks out is essentially, puts us on, if you guys are on Thursdays, then February first, I mean, um, March first, right?
Well, uh, four weeks out is the twenty-second, which is school vacation, so I think it makes sense.
And I, I don't...
So that, I think five weeks out is, is right on March first.
So March, March first seems to be a better deal, right? Yeah, I mean, I think we continue to...
Set that to March first now.
Or with the water... I'm going to put a spur, so...
I mean, to your point, and, and, you know, I've made it, you're creating, not most developers or a lot of developers, hey, as you go, I've told the town, I'm going to write you a check for the full amount, and we don't have to talk about it.
Yeah, you get a full payment of that anyway.
But, um, but to, to Council's point, to the extent that they can reach out to Al or Jeff and say, hey, can you explain this, or I don't understand, you know, this, or can you give me... That's a very, you know, constructive and productive way. As opposed to they do everything in the side or show up, give us a report, we go back in the side. So, five weeks is a generous amount of time that they should be able to, you know, do their report. Maybe even get the report into you guys a week or two ahead of time, but it'll give us...
So if you do it on February vacation?
It would give us the time to actually, you know, look at it and come prepared to respond. And then we would have a super productive, you know, next year, so.
And also at that point, it would be available to the public before the meeting as well. Not always March first and night, or... I think it's more like... Yeah, so we can put in, uh, March, Thursday, March first, seven p.m. here for our next meeting regarding this app. So Zach, just for the audience, I don't know if you heard me, so March first, Thursday, seven p.m. will be our next meeting here. And also, if you can be attentive to the zoning problem of the building department or any information that does come in, uh, so as soon as we get it, it will be available for you for anyone that wishes to, uh, see it.
Can I just might make a suggestion regarding that? You guys are all really close, both, you know, I think, relationship-wise as well as... Can maybe one or two of you kind of take on calling, so Annie doesn't take calls from fifteen different people, you know, and then be able to let people know? It just would be really helpful, I think, to her.
I think I'd suggest if we could send an email perhaps, and maybe you could just send it to one person via email to be dispersed. Does that going to work?
Sure.
That's what we do.
That's awesome, thank you.
Or, or any other packets, if they could just maybe make an extra like three or four of them, and then one person could just come and pick them up.
Well, that would be, because these guys provide the packets, we don't make them.
We'll have an email to you.
So, Jeff, is that possible, just one extra?
Yeah, we could do that.
Ear market for the neighbors.
We also, you know, as an FYI, we submit everything electronically to the town, to everything.
So he'll email it to you too? I don't, everybody is...
I don't want to be prick... Yeah, you're also providing hard copies, Jeff, right?
Uh, we did, granted, FYI, we did, but we did...
Yeah, but there's hundreds of pages, and if they're electronic, we each one of us then has to print out our own. And, and my printer doesn't do this.
No, I'm not saying that, I was saying, to, you know, if they said, hey, we would like exhibit rather than come into the town and, or, at, look to me to print twenty pages, the document is, you know, exists electronically. They can get it faster, look at it faster.
Whatever you work on with them is good. Were the new fill elevations in the, in the package that was submitted, the new fill elevations there?
I'm sorry, well, well, I just...
Everything, everything we talked about tonight, and we didn't talk about everything tonight, but all twenty-four of those exhibits were submitted to the town in hard copy and electronic form.
So if the town puts them on their website, a lot of towns do that, and then anyone can access them.
Yeah, I don't know if, if, if that's happening here, but...
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that's an idea.
You can come right in and put that, hit right to work as the new IT director.
Yay! She needs another job. There you go.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We're just going to take a, uh, a look, we just... We have a small audience, I don't know if anyone that needs to see this, if you want to come over to the side of the room, you're welcome to. Okay.
Wait, you can ride?
No, we can't.
Hey. That warms my heart.
Uh, good evening, I'm Michael Cusar, with the Grantham Group. I'm the applicant for the Zero Central Park Project. Uh, we're titled the Lost and Green Apartments, or, or application for a comprehensive permit pursuant to NGO 40B. Uh, the project, as you may know, is, uh, being developed in conjunction with the, the Citroen Housing Authority. Uh, the project involves the construction of a thirty-unit, twenty-seven thousand square, approximately twenty-seven thousand square foot, uh, new structure to be located directly behind an existing Citroen Housing Authority complex known as the, uh, Central Park Apartments. I'd like to introduce Stephen Colter, the chairman of the Citroen Housing Authority, just to sort of explain to you a little bit of the background of the project. And we'll kind of come back to me, and we'll talk a little bit about the, uh, project itself, uh, some of the key elements of funding associated with it. This is an affordable housing development. The Grantham Group is a developer of affordable senior living communities across the Commonwealth. Uh, we specialize in, uh, affordable assisted livings. Uh, but we also do have some, uh, limited independent living style apartments as well. Then, from there, we'd like to turn it over to Chi Man, the site civil engineer, who has come up with the site plan, uh, which you've received a, an update to the existing site plan map that reflects the property. Uh, just sort of by way of reference to that document initially, the plan, this property currently is under a HUD, uh, restriction that restricts the future use of it as affordable housing. The, uh, key proviso, we, reason we haven't been able to subdivide the property yet is that in order to make the application to HUD to allow us to subdivide the property, to release us from the, uh, the restriction, we have to have a permit in hand in order to do that pursuant to HUD rig. So I apologize for the confusion in the document. But basically, what we have in the future here will be a pro, piece of property, two lots, that would be grandfathered in by A and R because there's sufficient, uh, sufficient frontage, et cetera, to have two lots on the, uh, split off from the existing, uh, subdivided from the existing property. So why don't I just start here and turn it over to Stephen and, uh, sort of give you an overview of the project and how we got to this point? The idea has always been to kind of pursue this as a friendly 40B. Uh, part of this, it wasn't a local initiative condition, but, um, this will, this project will add to the town's supply of, uh, of state, state subsidized housing inventory.
Stephen will describe for us.
Yes, thank you very much, Stephen Colter, I'm the chair of the Citroen Housing Authority. Several years ago, um, you know, we, we took a look at properties that we, um, have and looked for ways that we could increase the stock of available affordable, uh, housing that we have. There's currently two hundred and eighteen units that are under the purview of the Citroen Housing Authority. So taking a look at properties that we, that we own through the help of our fellow consultants, we saw that the land behind Central School was a great logical place to look as an opportunity to help expand the, uh, affordable, uh, housing that we have. Through partnership with the Affordable Housing Trust, we're able to get the funds necessary to do the preliminary, um, uh, engineering, uh, to be able to see what would be possible on that lot based on size, setbacks, things like that, uh, did legal work, all the necessary requirements that we needed in order to be able to post the RFP, which, uh, we posted, um, saying what we were looking to, to get feedback from qualified developers as to what they could do to help us to be able to expand the affordable senior housing stock that we have. Uh, we received, uh, three different, um, responses to the RFP. We went through an exhaustive, uh, process of screening each of the developers, visiting their existing properties, um, interviews, taking a look at the ongoing maintenance of how they actually maintain the properties that they have. Because, you know, this, this, this project is going to be a joint partnership with, uh, the Grantham Group, who is, uh, the chosen developer. So for, for us, it was important to make sure that this partnership was one where we could work very well, one that understood what we were looking for ongoing as a, a neighbor. You know, a, uh, professional, uh, organization that would be able to maintain the property to the standards that we all expect. And, and, you know, the goal that, that my board set out was to have, um, a property that was consistent with the surrounding buildings, one that, you know, I said, I, I want people to drive by and say, what a nice looking property, what a nice building, and then to find out after the fact that, oh, that's affordable? Uh, that was, that was my personal goal, was, was to have this be an attractive addition to the town and to have it fulfill a really much-needed void in, um, the stock of affordable senior housing. We also required that this be one hundred percent affordable. So unlike a lot of other 40Bs, twenty-five percent gets over the threshold, we said one hundred percent of these units needed to be affordable. And the Grantham Group was able to put together a package to build thirty units, and not only are these one hundred percent affordable, but the, the levels to which they, um, help are in the thirty and sixty percent AMI. So it really helps those people in the, the most needed categories of affordability. Um, you know, those seniors that, you know, they might be a little too much to qualify to move into Central Park, but they still are by no means able to afford, you know, a big house or, you know... There are plenty of people that have been in Citroen for, for, you know, forty years, and they've been here, raised their children, and now the property tax is going up, the value of the house, the maintenance, all of these things, they find themselves in a situation where they can no longer afford to be in the term in which they raised their family. This is an opportunity to be able to help provide an opportunity for these people to stay in town, you know, to, you know, to, to remain part of the community, uh, and to, you know, do it. And what I do is just a, you know, a, a beautiful, um, you know, looking addition to the town, and it'll be, you know, a great addition to the Central Park campus. So, uh, I'll turn it over to Mike Cusar, the Grantham Group.
So I don't know how you prefer to proceed with this, uh, with this hearing, but we're looking for, uh, pursuing that 40B, that friendly 40B, the comprehensive permit. We would like, uh, you know, you have the, uh, the application in front of you. There are certain zoning, um, waivers that we're looking for, or... Uh, what we try to do is take a look at the existing zoning code for multifamily housing. Uh, the, the properties currently zoned are two, which prohibits this type of housing. But we looked at, uh, we looked at using the multifamily dwelling complex in the zone as, as listed in the zoning code as sort of the model from which, that we'd like to base our waivers on. So we'd like to have, be able to build this multi, uh, the property itself, it's thirty units, they're all one-bedroom, six hundred and ninety square feet. It's a double-livided corridor, uh, two floors, elevator, fully ADA, accessible and compliant. Uh, there's some common space and, uh, some, uh, resident support space specifically. One of the issues, uh, with, uh, having an elderly population is aging in place. The state's really prioritizing the idea of bringing services into seniors, uh, where they live so that they may age in place. So part of that is that the state's looking for some space for the visiting nurses and other programming to occur. We've been in contact with the, with the Senior Center and then also with the, the town social worker and council on aging to discuss sort of programmatically how to program the space so that seniors, uh, in town can also use it, so that it's some blood pressure clinics. We'll be working with the South Shore Elder Services to provide continuing care services through third-party providers for residents of the Lost and Green Apartments, but also Central Park. So we're looking for a specific set of sort of waivers. Uh, I don't know if this is a good opportunity to kind of turn it over to Chi to talk about, a little bit about the site plan, and then maybe we can come back to the building itself to discuss that, any concerns you might have. One of the big issues that we have is that, uh, as you may know, we've received significantly generous, uh, funding commitment from the town at town meeting last spring. But that brings to, uh, a total of two point five million dollars of local support to fund this affordable housing project. The project is being funded through a combination of sources. It's a blended finance structure. The biggest component of that is the federal loan and housing tax credit program. The state, every state has allocated a certain percentage of loan and housing tax credits. And for every dollar of tax credit authority provided by the federal government, there's about, in Massachusetts, there's about twenty dollars worth of projects chasing that one dollar of credit. So it's an extremely competitive process. It can often take three years. This project is, uh, is unique in that the level of local support being provided to it makes it stand apart. Uh, unfortunately, the funding cycle for this tax credit program is on a yearly cycle. So if you miss that yearly cycle, you don't get to, uh, put in for another year. Uh, we received preliminary approval to enter into the rental cycle, and our application is due February fifteenth, with the contingency that we have zoning, a contingent zoning approval in place, meaning that if we were, uh, to approach you tonight, if we could receive a, a comprehensive permit, uh, approval subject to conditions, that would be sufficient for our purposes, as long as, you know, for example, in other jurisdictions...
For your funding purposes.
For our funding purposes. So for example, in another jurisdiction, we received that kind of conditional approval where we basically had a, uh, a conditional approval that then had a series of benchmarks that we had to hit. For example, fire sign up, you know, any, any concerns that town departments might have had. That was all built into the comprehensive permit. So there wasn't, before we were able to pull a building permit, all those conditions had to be satisfied to the, uh... So in that, in that case, that the zoning board in that town felt, uh, that was, uh... They had sufficient leverage over this project to ensure that it adhered to, uh, the design standards, the guidelines that they had established, but we were able to receive the level of approval we needed locally in order to get into that funding cycle. If we miss this funding cycle, we're out another year. Construction costs are escalating.
September, I thought it was February and September, no?
No, it's a, it's one. Uh, there was a September round, and that was specifically for family housing. The other thing we have sort of going against this project is that by and large, the DHCD tends to look more favorably on family housing projects. That's sort of been a priority category. However, this year, they have introduced a, a new category of priority project, which is for towns that have not met, uh, production of senior housing, for towns that have not met their ten percent of their state, uh, subsidized housing inventory. So this is a unique new, uh, criteria. We position this project very strongly as against other projects that are potentially in the queue. So if we miss this funding cycle, we, we've lost quite a bit, um, you know, we're out another year with construction costs and where the project becomes more and more difficult to pull off financially. It's very tight as it is, uh, but that's just our, the big concern that we have as a developer is that it, it is very likely that we'll put it in this application, may not get funded, but at least we'll be well-suited for the following year, so.
Just a couple of quick notifications.
Yep.
Is it a hundred percent rental?
Hundred percent rental.
Okay, and is there a preference to Citroen residents?
Yep, there's an initial local preference that's, that's installed. So the Housing Authority maintains a pretty, uh, robust waitlist, and so we're going to be working with that waitlist. Uh, I, I, I'm not exaggerating when I say I get a call once a week on this project. Sorry, somebody got my card. So we assume that, you know, we're going to be able to fill this thing up really fast, and initially, there'll be a local preference in place. Uh, because of fair housing rules, you can't say, this building is restricted exclusively to Citroen residents, because that, you know, is constitutionally impermissible, but there is...
Have you vetted the local preference with DHCD?
Yes.
They, they normally require that you show a demonstrated need for local preference.
Right, yes, we have, and we've had the, we've had an experience with that in Concord, recently. So we have the very...
Kind of pre...
Yep.
I mean, it seems like, uh, I mean, just in, in general, the location makes good use of existing infrastructure for those to get there, you know, you can often get there in the building, parking and stuff. Uh, but, uh, but particularly to, uh, you know, existing housing, which doesn't make so much sense for the town. I imagine there was several other sites, uh, in this process.
Yeah, you know, the Housing Authority owns another parcel on the Driftway, you know, which is one that we looked into, how we could, you know, go and do something with that. This, this year, with that, it's, you know, completely blank canvas of space right there, a budding out property. Town owns the land behind it, the library next door. It, it was, it was just a, a natural, um, you know, place to, you know, it's completely wasted space right now. It's an opportunity to do something with that land, to be able to increase the housing stock, you know, really fill a need, um, you know, that's pretty, pretty, pretty big in town.
And that's what the town's doing as well?
And that's a town sewer as well? Yes, it's a town sewer. It's actually, one of the greatest things about it is that it's served, the utility, we can, you know, get into this when we talk about the site plan, but the utilities are already on site. There's gas, water, sewer, and, you know, by virtue of the fact that there's natural gas on site, that enables us to create a very, very, this will be a fully, this will need certified structure, so it'll be extremely efficient. The gas allows us to put in a combination heater, individual furnaces in each unit, which allows the resident to, you know, heat and cool, but it creates extraordinary efficiencies. Yeah. You know, if you've ever dealt with elderly housing, it's either, it's never warm enough or never cold enough, you know, it's, it's always, it's hard to-
It's absolutely called elderly persons. And I've said personal, yeah. It's hard for me.
There, we're, you know, we're going to get this lead, the project will be LEED certified. We're, you know, we're trying to limit the, the other bit we're talking about is we want to limit the amount of impermeable space, you know, through parking lots. There's a part, we're basically building in sort of like an existing parking lot. We don't, we want to create, we basically want a new parking lot that will just have, will have a minimum number of spaces, you know, for, you know, one-
Five.
Yeah, 37 new spaces to be created as opposed to the zoning code, which would be mandated in two months per apartment. Given the population that we're talking about, we think one space, one space per unit is sufficient, plus guests will have seven guest spots and handicap spots, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, since you're talking about the, the parking, I noticed you've got, you basically have one spot and your, your packet says 35, one place it says 37, and then I literally count on the map, you've got 40, so.
Well, actually, we have updated site plan that will-
It's 40 altogether.
It's 40 altogether, yeah.
It is 40.
So part of the, part of the confusion is that there are certain spots that once we have the, you know, you have existing spots, you have existing spots associated with the Central Park Apartments. It's not really delineated back there currently, but it does vary somewhat. So why don't we, I'll turn it over, we'll talk site plan. Might make sense to just do that right now.
And plus, in the new, just the, in the new block, they're covering for handicap, van parking, those types of things that, you know, we put additional room that's required as well.
So I'll turn it over to Chi, the engineer.
So this is kind of like a roll-up of the area of the, the locus. Entire lot is so, this entire lot is, and humus is a irregular shape along Central Park Drive, and, which is about 314, 2213 thousand square foot. And we are proposing a new lot line around the existing building. So proposed lot two, which is the project that's going, is kind of like we have irregular shape and has frontage on Central Park Drive. However, the access, we're going to go to, you know, you can see the entire lot of the access, we're going to utilize the existing driveway. So the existing drive is going to access the existing building and also the proposed apartment.
And I'd just like to interject, the reason behind, the rationale behind that is obviously, given the proximity of the Lawson Tower here, there's, you know, an aesthetic imperative for us, and I think for the Housing Authority as well, and not to mention the Historical Society, to not have a new roadway cut cross between the tower and the school. Let's maintain that as a nice grassy permeable area and use the existing parking lot just as the entrance.
That was, that was, that was a very important point for the Housing Authority is we looked at some of the, you know, other, you know, proposals, you know, some had a big driveway right there. We wanted to be as minimally impactful of one of the, the, you know, focal points of Situate and make sure that we didn't at all take away from the beautiful Lawson Tower and have all the traffic, you know, coming the other way. You know, as we talked to the fire department, you know, there was concern about, you know, an additional emergency way in there. So there's been a combination for that that allows for that without making that, you know, part of the driveway that's going to be in any way on-site.
The next sheet is the, we call it existing condition. It shows the existing building and parking lot. And the proposed lot two, which is a subject lot, is going, is basically a lawn area right now. The next page is going to show the proposed building on the layout. Access is going to go through the existing parking lot. Part of this A and R subdivision is going to provide access easement to, so the cars and utilities can access to the proposed lot. We have a parking lot on the side of the building and also a lot of parking at the front of the building, the proposed building. And answer some questions, the total parking is 40 parking space. And because we feel that this is elderly housing, so we have more than enough of the handicap parking. Might be more needs for that. We have totally fine. They are all very inaccessible. And the irregular parking is 35, which we feel is still, you know, for one of the units and there's some visitors and also maintenance guy who come to work here. And also, we, there are some concerns about the fire department act. They, they want to make sure that's provide access to three sides of the building to fight the fire. What we are proposing is through the existing parking lot, fire truck can come in and also from the west, the south end of the building, we create what we call a pay, grass pay, which is a stabilized structure turf, which the fire, the fire truck can come in and, and drive through access. And they have circulation around to fight fire, not only about this building, but also about the existing building as well.
Have you talked to the fire chief yet?
Yes. Oh, yes, we did. We had a sit-down meeting with, with some of the department heads, and that was a specific issue that was raised. One of the other issues that was raised by the concerns of the fire department was, yes, access to three sides of the building and then also inclusion of a fire pump system to address the pressure issue and a generator. So all those items have been incorporated into the design.
This plan is the utility plan. Basically, the existing utilities is right intersection of Central Park Drive and Branch Street. We can bring in electric, gas, and also water right into the site, short distance. And there's a sewer easement right across the Central Park Drive, right moving the existing site. We'll be able to tie into the sanitary, about going out into the public right away. And stormwater management, the site currently where, where the proposed building located is currently 100% lawn area. So our approach is, we run an analysis, take the existing runoff from the existing site and we, in the design, we incorporate some underground retention system. Basically, we'll take the, on the proposed condition, take all the runoff and calculate that. They'll be retained by the retention systems. And this is the discharge point where the existing drain, drain line is. Our discharge rate and volume is less than what is current draining into that pipe. So there will be no impact, any runoff issue going through.
So you're handling both runoff for the existing condition as well as for your new building with underground?
Yes, we take the, kind of like the impact area and we run the drainage analysis, like half of this building drainage choice is parking lot. So this is, we leave in half of this building draining into the existing parking lot, into the existing pipe. So we took that into account and we do the entire drainage design and capture the parking runoff, the existing parking runoff and the, the added imperious area, and we retain on-site and control the discharge rate. And that discharge rate is lower than the existing rate that's going out into that existing pipe. We've run it for two years on, 10 years on, 25 years on, and 100 years on.
100% of the drainage is in this underground stuff?
Well, it's not capturing everything, but-
Right.
But they, they, the, the system retain the runoff. So temporarily store them and on a controlled discharge rate. So what we are releasing out of this proposed development is less than what is currently draining out.
So more than 100% of the increase?
Yes. It's not like storing all the water and not letting it out. We control, we control it somewhat on-site and control the discharge and draining out is going to be less than what is currently.
So there's going to be need, some need for some cross easements there too, right? Because you're going to be taking storage some, or at least temporarily some for the existing building on your lot, on this lot? So there's going to have to be some-
I think we can work out some languages because we do have real pay existing drain pipe that's on-site.
Right. And then what about, it will have to also work out existing, I guess, delegation of responsibility for O and M for that system? Because I mean, I'm assuming the underground system does require some maintenance?
Right. The underground system is entirely of the, the proposed site. I think the maintenance are-
Right, but isn't, isn't the underground system taking some from the existing building?
Yes, taking some from the existing.
So that, that's on us as developers. Actually, you guys are managing 100% and taking responsibility in that.
Perhaps this is a good time to clarify the ownership of the sites. And so, so who owns the, the Housing Authority owns the entirety of the site now?
The Housing Authority owns the entirety of that site right now. What we're doing is seeking to subdivide of the land to be able to sell the new parcel to the Grantham Group for a dollar and take the CPC funds and the Federal Housing Trust funds that would go to help to audit the development of the property. The Grantham Group would develop and maintain this going forward and make sure that the units would be 100% affordable as they are to be in perpetuity. So all ongoing maintenance, repairs, anything like that is not the responsibility of the Housing Authority or the town. It's on the Grantham Group to, you know, do that, which was very important for us to see how the developers maintain the existing properties that they have. Because this was something we want to make sure that, that this partnership going forward, that, that there was no issue that, you know, we could see as far as the ability or the intent for them to be able to, you know, to maintain these properties properly. You know, also DHCD has very specific requirements as far as maintenance and, you know, you know, funding, future maintenance. So there's very diligent watchdog to make sure that these independent developers are setting aside appropriate money to be able to maintain, you know, these properties going forward. So that was very important.
So just to the ownership issue, we're in a bit of a chicken and egg here because back in, I guess it was the eighties when the Central Park Apartments was originally funded, it was an old school, sold to the Housing Authority. At that time, the federal government was funding senior housing projects very lucratively, or, you know, funding them very well. And so Central Park Apartments were renovated pursuant to that, and then it basically HUD has a rider, or basically has a restriction on the reuse of the property, that it has to be used for affordable housing. Any reuse of this property that they, you know, funded has to be, you know, for affordable housing. Well, one would think that under that logic, that building 100% affordable housing project behind it would enable you to go ask HUD for permission to subdivide the property. But no, in fact, the issue is this, you know, through whatever regulatory or practice issue they have, you can't approach HUD without, to subdivide the property, to ask permission until you have a permanent hand for the affordable housing development. So that's why we haven't filed an A and R on the project. Because lot two here, by virtue of its frontage on Central Park, it qualifies for an A and R. It has sufficient road frontage. What's unique about what we're trying to do is that instead of throwing in a new access road here, we're going to run through the existing parking lot. But that, in the interim, in order to address this, what we've done is with the Housing Authority, in order to put in this application for funding, we're going to have a lease that will be sort of demise the premises until such a point as we would have permit that we could then file with HUD that would then give us our approval. We expect that, provided that we have a permitted permit, that we can show HUD that then we can go through their process and, you know, 30 to 60 days, get an approval to subdivide, at which point we give a board.
This, this board can sign that plan under, under 40B, so there's cases on that. So you have to, I don't think you have to do two stops there, but- I had a question for the Housing Authority and, and you guys, and I trust you've spoken to your council about this, you guys can sell for nominal consideration, not fair market value property that they you hold title to?
We can, well, for the development of affordable senior housing, we, you know, are able to do that because that's part of, you know, the increase of that. You know, we had to provide this, HUD had a list of bids needed to be done, you know, what they needed, you know, was a, you know, analysis, you know, of the value.
I'm not talking about that to HUD side. I'm talking about Massachusetts state law. You guys are allowed to sell property for-
As long as it's to go towards development of affordable housing. We couldn't go and sell that to, you know, put away meds, but we could do that to increase the housing stock.
And in the Housing Authority, when we replied to the RFP was via, what, it was a 30, was it 30, 30B process?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was a fully vetted. That, I think was, what's really unique about what the Housing Authority did is that all the due diligence was done upfront. So in terms of like getting the permission and sign-offs to convey the property subsequently, that was all, that legal analysis was all done and run through that 40B process.
And the grant was reviewed by town council. We had the town administrator, who was the chief procurement officer, oversaw the whole process of the bids and the voting, and so it was very organized as per what was required by, the AG oversees this as far as making sure that everything was done exactly so.
So in other words, the use can never change?
This will always be for affordable housing?
Right. Always or for 30 years?
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity.
And what cover is it in perpetuity?
Chapter 184. So it's, there's, so there's some exceptions to the vanilla restrictions that can only be for 30 years with possible renewal and agriculture conservation in affordable housing. I'm going to go perpetual.
We have a question from the audience. Mr. Sullivan. Brian Sullivan, Sherman Drive. The, the creation, the A and R is not going to create a non-conformity for the setback for central, central schools, central housing, whatever it is. I'm just looking at the lot line on the south side, and I don't know what the setback is. I think it was 15 feet or-
The setback is 15 feet and this conforms to the-
That conforms to the 15?
Exactly, to the, or the frontage, front yard.
Okay, is Central Park Drive a public way?
Yes. Yes, it is. Apparently back in the, when this property, it was accepted as a town, part of the due diligence file on this, which is, the property was, was conveyed by the town to the Housing Authority, is what this became, this was explicitly accepted as a town way, which it had been, I guess, effectively when it was a school as well, so.
Well, it's a term of art, but if you say it's a public way, whatever. The, the concern that I would have is on Saturdays in the spring and fall, this entire area is remarkably congested with parents bringing their kids to soccer, dropping their kids off, picking them up, coaching. And there's no, there's no emergency access. You know, fire truck would, would have to just let go around, so. So I don't know if you, the Housing Authority, you'd be aware of this because you're local. These folks probably don't. But if anything has been done to consider that, to address it, to do anything, you know, to mitigate that on Saturdays. And I think it's pretty much exclusively on Saturdays that it's a disaster. And again, it's only in the spring and the fall when you've got kids playing soccer. Have you considered that?
I, I am not aware of that. It's outside the scope of, it's public roads, I'm not really sure whether, I don't...
Well, yeah, it's a public road, but you, you're, you're increasing traffic flow and you're, it's going to impact your residents. They're going to be fired up because people are going to park in their spots when they go out to the grocery store on Saturday morning. So it's something you should be aware of.
We're going to have delineated resident parking spots and visitor parking spots. And so all residents will have resident stickers and we'll, we'll put up conspicuous notices that, to that effect, that this is a controlled parking area.
As well as the Housing Authority, we've, we've, we've had a few complaints about early morning Saturday soccer. Parkers there, so we've increased the signage and, and we'll be, you know, making sure that it's, it's abundantly clear that all that parking is for residents only, not for, you know, sports activities, people to park. Because residents need a place to park and they need to have that. So, you know, we do have signs, you know, but, you know, we will make sure, you know, because we have had issues with that, that, you know, it becomes even, you know, more abundantly clear. If we need to, you know, have people ticketed or whatever, then, you know, we'll do what we need to do to make sure that, that, you know, people understand.
I was kind of concerned that, that you didn't have enough parking and wondering what you used to model your analysis that people over sixty-two or even one per, per household.
The site can actually, has enough room to add more parking, but we, we kind of feel that on the environmental standpoint. We, we don't want to add more pavement if we don't have to. And given this is a senior apartment, you ultimately have more than one.
And you might have certain amount of people who don't drive or don't be able to. If you took that into consideration.
So, yeah, we, we have. In our experience as operators of assisted living facilities, we often run up against this very same question. Because we're often asked like, well, the zoning code says, you know, one and a half block slots per apartment. And we're proposing eighty-three apartments. And we said, well, you know, we're, we're talking about a frail elderly population. If maybe one or two of those people has a car, we'd be lucky. But largely when we're talking about parking, we're talking about the staff and we're talking about visitors. Now, it's been our experience that when you're dealing with, remember, we're dealing with affordable housing here and we're dealing with a very, we're dealing with a very low income, once, eight, eight units of the project are reserved for very low income folks, folks making thirty percent of AMI. That's essentially social security. So the idea that you potentially could have multiple cars, it would be extremely, it would be an extreme financial challenge for this population to maintain multiple vehicles.
See, I have a quick question on that and excuse my naivety and calculations. But to qualify on an income basis, does it take into account assets you already have? Or is it case taking into account, it does take into...
There is an asset calculation of what, what your loved and carried. They've evolved those rules over time and I couldn't recite them to you right now.
Sure, I'm not asking you, but... So someone who isn't making much money anymore, but made plenty of it in years past...
There is some asset, there is some asset allowance, but, right.
Is there allowance for a vehicle that's not counted in?
In, income?
No. You're talking income?
He's talking income.
He's talking...
I'm, I'm asking about assets. If I could make a million dollars a year until I'm sixty-five and then stop working and not make...
Well, it's certainly going to take in your investment income too.
Well, right, but I could...
But also assets from the sale of real estate.
I could have plenty of money in a checking account and as I'm sure plenty of residents and constituents do. And your income in the last taxable year could qualify to live in this apartment. Is that accurate?
There is some, some, so you, you don't have to be at zero assets.
Right.
But, but there is some consideration in the qualification. I can't say there are time prices.
There is an asset based, an asset based test that's associated with this. We're not, we're not, we're not, part of the screening process is finding, would be for us to identify those folks most in need of this housing. So, yeah, I mean, there's, we're not going to be having folks that have substantial assets that they're sitting on. Because there is, as, as mentioned, we're looking at their tax returns, we're looking at their, the, we have to look at their bank accounts. We look at everything that they have.
Well, there's going to be a monitoring agency, right, independently. Can I ask about the, the parking to Sarah's point? If there was going to be additional, like, so shadow parking? But like, let's say we put in a condition, a permit, which, which we do occasionally, that says in six months, we're going to take a look and, after full occupancy, we're going to take a look and see how parking goes. And if you guys are suffering for, for spaces, we'll have you build them out in a certain area. If you flip, can you flip back to where the parking is?
I think that there's some parking is actually right.
Parking's right there, is my understanding. So where, if you had to build some more spaces?
Basically extend this parking down.
Yeah.
So that, that lot there is, is there already, is it, is it?
No, not all of them.
No, the longer one is there already. And the one behind Central is...
So we can put it as...
Is it in parking?
You know, just to, just to kind of add, you know, some perspective from what we have experienced at Central Park. I mean, primarily, these are single, single people in each unit. These are one-bedroom units. They're, they're, they're not extraordinarily large. Very few units are occupied by, you know, more than one person. So typically, you're going to have one individual that has a car. And that's, that's about it. Then you have others that don't drive, they take the sloop or, or, you know, they do other things. But, you know, to, to, you know, to figure that, that these are primarily one-car households is, is what we've kind of experienced in all of our Housing Authority properties.
Can I ask that, do you have any sense of Wheeler Park, Linkin Park, what the automobile stock is versus...
Generally, it's about one car per Wheeler Park in Wheeler One, where a little shy of having one space per unit. And we tend to run into a little challenge with that. But, you know, our goal is to try to figure out how to reconfigure that so that we have at least one per unit. Because that seems to be, that would, that would do the trick for that.
I really, I really like your suggestion about the, the condition to look at it. Because, you know, the, the, the population and, and the whole concept of assisted living is completely different from this. There's, you know, this is, this is independent living. And, you know, it may be, maybe predominantly single people, but there may be not. And again, I, I just think to have something in place, if, if parking is going to be an issue, to have it, to have it there. Because I, I just, it's kind of my pet peeve that people, where they, where they live, they need to be able to have a parking spot.
Certainly, and I understand you're quite about assisted living and that we, we, you know, I didn't mean to draw a, a complete parallel there. But just based on some of our experience and, you know, some from the Housing Authority experience, we don't want to overbuild, we don't want to create too much impermeable because then we got to manage the stormwater.
Well, yeah, but by the same token, you, you're putting that, those pavers for that driveway, that's, those are permeable pavers. You can take that parking lot, extend the parking lot with those permeable pavers. So it looks like grass, but underneath the grass, there's those, you know what I'm talking about, right?
I, I do, I do. I guess what the difference is, is that ultimately, if we were to shift, and what we've done, we've had this contingency on another project that we, we did, where basically sort of said, okay, we've delineated an area that could be potentially future expansion of parking. And we, it, knowing that ahead of time, we were able to scale stormwater management with that in mind. We would just need to know that if, if you wanted to see, how many more slots were you looking to pick up? I mean...
I, I don't know, what, what, what if we, if we stuck second by a mile, what would it be? Thirty, forty-five?
Forty-five, forty-five. Plus the, plus the employees, so that would probably create up to fifty.
Yeah.
Employees? What employees?
There's an employee.
On-site?
Part-time.
You have a lot of... I, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, I looked.
Yeah, there, there will be notice. And there will be, there will be a staff person who periodically... The key is, I, I really, I, you know, I like the idea of looking at it in six months to see if there's still a parking issue there. You know, you had to identify this area for its future expansion of parking. We can do that, but we, you know, we, there are certain, you know, we want to pick up landscaping work. We have dumpster location. But as a contingency, we could...
Would be a number that we'd want to keep them working?
Well, that's what I think. Like forty, twenty dollars.
Well, say, if the town standard is one point five.
That's what I would say.
That's forty-five, so it's fifty-five.
Yeah, so you, you just plan on six more spots in a contingent.
All right, we can, we can...
Or you could just build six more spots.
Well, and you should calculate that into drainage, you know?
Right, I mean, that's, that's, we want analysis done now, that drainage. Because it's stormwater management issue. It's really not, it's not about, you know, the, the concrete or, you know, the pavement. It's really about the, it's the management, it's building a system that's right size to catch that additional impermeable area.
Let me just have one question or anything?
Yep.
My name's Nancy Chapman, I'm a flat artist, I live at seventy-four Bridge Street. I happen to also be on the Affordable Housing Trust. And I also have professional experience. I work for an affordable housing company with seniors. And parking is, my comments are on parking. I think you had asked earlier if an automobile is counted as an asset and it's not, to my knowledge. We have, I work in a development that has two hundred twenty-three units, about three hundred residents. So that does represent, you know, a number of, you know, married couples, for example. Or we also have single households with full-time live-in aides. So there would be possibly an additional, and they may have two vehicles. And I also want to say that since the goal here, which I applaud, is to promote aging in place, you have to understand that as people age in place, they do often need increased level of services, which means that you'll need parking for service providers, the home health aides, you know, in addition to the visiting nurses. So I would err, my recommendation is just to err on the side of caution. I love the shadow parking idea. I wonder if you may want to extend that for longer than six months to really give this, you know, to, to, to leave an opening, if you will, for, for building future parking sites.
Out of curiosity, at what point do you start bumping up against the setback on the property line here? I think you got to punch your room in.
You can park right to the...
Park right to the...
Yeah, the setback to the property. Just visually scale that, I think you can park that side lot. And that side lot right now is twenty-six acres. So you could go, you had a twenty to twenty-five gallon.
Yeah.
Excessive, I mean, late now and as...
The other thing is that the idea is to sort of visually tie this together with the library and to have essentially, I mean, I don't want to have a situation where we have two lots like this sitting in kind of parallel. Part of the idea is that we want to save as much land as we can for, we're planning to put in some community gardens for the residents, kind of whatever we add to parking or subtracting from common green space, so.
Yeah, it, it could be a case too, if you take the center line and put six spaces in, just, you know, over eighteen feet into the center, it still has to move that way, instead of extending the whole parking lot.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I, I don't...
The engineer might understand. So we could pick up what, ten slots without adversely...
Yeah, you're out of the whole...
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's sort of had to change, it changes watching.
I'm sort of related to that, because you talked about, about you're, you've chosen for five handicap spots. And again, I'm wondering where that number came up?
Well, I think the ADA requirement, I believe we need two or three.
Don't you hit fifteen as well?
And we go by more.
And I'm kind of curious, if I could, what's, what's been your experience in terms of, you know, again, we're, we are talking about a population, you're talking about aging in place, and you're talking about people becoming less mobile. So is that...
Through the, there's something called a reasonable accommodation process. And people, as they become, like you said, less mobile, they may originally move in and have a parking space that's far away, but they need to be up closer to the front door. If there are, if, if something may apply for it, it's due to a medical need or a medical disability, they can approach the management office and, and basically apply for a reserved spot close to the front.
But that's not exactly what I was asking. Do you, in terms of the number of handicap spots required?
I, I couldn't, it's probably what, what's mandated. Because that's, it's more an issue that we, we're able to, to give spots through reasonable accommodation. With a handicap spot, anyone can park there. They're not reserved parking spots. So, you know, visitor, a guest, a vendor, anyone can pull into that spot. But with a, with a spot that's reserved, and I didn't hear that you were going, it didn't sound like that's what you were doing?
Reserved handicap spots?
Or designated parking spaces?
We're really open to playing with any, any iteration of that. I think that it, it's reasonable to believe that we want to keep our travel distances for some of our residents. We'd probably identify these, these non-handicap spots in the front for our priority mobility. Again, that's all makes the question at one point, you know, this is certified, you know, obviously by the GATRA services. But, yeah, we would identify those as priority spots for them. They're not going to come visitor spots, you know, that kind of thing. It would be priority spots for residents that have mobility issues.
Right, we call them reserved because those spots are designated for that one resident only. And no one else has a lot to park.
Yeah, and, and sort of to go back to the soccer game issue, you know, it sounds to me like we're probably looking at a situation where we're going to have some sort of reserve parking as part of a, you know, in conjunction with the housing, with the existing residents at Central Park, probably some regime established that sort of identifies parking spots, just for the safety.
Like that day, you just have to have a resident sticker. I mean, that's kind of as simple as it could possibly be.
And that's, yeah, that's probably good ground for that. You know, we've tried having specific assigned spaces.
Yeah.
And that can create a whole bunch of different work and frustration and complaints and, and, you know, more management required to be able to do that than just saying, okay, if, if you need a sticker to park in this lot, so that only residents there park there, but not, oh, Sally's in my spot, call her maker, who? You know, that's the kind of things that, you know, we deal with, you know, in the Housing Authority, trying to figure out, okay, how do we balance this?
And so I think that beyond, we would, you know, it would be sort of a residence-only parking. Obviously, if there's mobility issues, those would be specifically assigned slots. We wouldn't have numbered spots, for the exact reasons you mentioned.
Yeah, if you could, if you could either just straight out build more, build another set of, you know, full-end spots to the back or, or possibly, yes, you have a shadow parking, so there's just some...
So how many, how many can we, without adversely bumping out?
I mean, we can get six, like five to six.
Would that be satisfactory, if we added five to six spots, so we brought the total up to forty-five, forty-six?
I mean, I'm making that. Only because I anticipate...
I mean, you can even asphalt the area and stripe it later on.
That's also meaningful, that's valid. I mean, the lot doesn't take into consideration all of the management, you know, space needed or, does it, there's spaces needed or enhanced, so.
And they're up to...
They're, they're hitting the bylaw in one and a half.
If one less relates a need?
If you do six, then you do seven.
Additional five, you need the final.
Yeah, we would draw that one. So if...
I mean, we'd encourage you to put in the, in the six if it balances it nicely and... I mean, we'd encourage you to put in the, in the six, if it balances it nicely, and, and, well, actually, better.
Well, I think the six one might, it might be more handicap over that area too.
So we just re-designate one of these handicap, alright. Um, in terms of process, the board, what are we looking at, um, you know, in terms of, what I had mentioned earlier, how one of our urgent considerations is getting to a contingent permit where we have, we could include these specific issues, um, you know, to be addressed, as before, we could have a building permit, and anything, you know, any other issues that you might have. What, what, what's the board's feeling of being able to move on this in a relatively short order?
I mean, the, the, both, our two major concerns, one would be the stormwater review, uh, that, that would.
You can, you can do that post-permit with the, with the final set of plans.
Yeah, it, it sounds like the fire, uh, the fire access review would be.
I have kind of an omnibus condition where, I mean, I normally wouldn't have this amount of post-permit review, but it's a small project, and, um, there are things we can structure to, to fold into various professionals, whether it be, you know, fire and the civil, um, taking a look at things for the final plan review. I mean, it's up to you guys, it's, it's unusual, obviously, to go in one night in a, in a significant concession, but.
Well, I just, I just have actually more questions about it. Um, and, um, and some of them are, I, I was wondering if you could just explain the, the eight units of thirty percent, and the twenty-two, and the sixty percent. I, I, I'm a little just not that familiar with what you're talking about, or how that's done, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, so, basically what that means, and, uh, I'm sorry, it's, it's, uh, thirty percent of area median income. So basically, you take, you take a look at what the area, say, for, just for the sake of conversation, the area median, in ease of numbers, area median income of situates a hundred thousand dollars. People that could occupy those eight units have to make thirty percent of that area median income, or thirty thousand dollars.
Have to, or, but only, like the max.
Max.
Okay.
So you're really dealing with folks well below that.
Right.
So they can never exceed that. So similarly, with the sixty percent of AMI, those people would be at sixty thousand dollars, because the AMI, the hypothetical AMI rate is a hundred thousand dollars, in this case. So that's the rent restriction.
So can you guys just clarify for the audience, or for anyone, these are hypothetical numbers, this is not the actual.
Correct, correct, that was just, just for the sake, you know, simple math on my feet.
Yeah. Yeah, put it this perspective, it, it looks like the AMI is about forty-five thousand dollars.
No, thirty percent of the AMI?
No, no, I think, I think that's.
Not per person.
No, the, the median AMI is higher than forty-five.
Yes, it's.
It's, it's.
So it is the situ, it's the situate, that's, that's.
It's actually, you're in the Boston PMSA.
Say that again here?
You're in the Boston, you're, it's, it's, it's not just Boston, you're in a big region.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's not as.
No, it's not that micro, it's, it's regional, it's regional. Now, on, on that, given how the rental works with the affordable housing, there'll be a group of eight, and those will, if someone goes over income, I mean, how?
Right, because those specific units are going to be section eight as well.
So, so those units, those are all staying, because units can kind of float.
Right, so we would potentially, what we do in other communities where, uh, we have, we run into these issues, we try to recategorize the unit. And note, I mean, if somebody hits the jackpot, I'm, I'm not even sure how you deal with that, because suddenly they have a massive, their income, they're no longer income-qualified for the project.
I think section eight doesn't, I think it requires yearly, um, reserve.
All the, all the required, manual, and you.
So if you're making too much.
I think it's usually, once you hit a hundred forty percent of the designated income for that unit, um, not a hundred forty percent of AMI, but a hundred forty percent of your maximum income, then you, yeah, then, then you're, then you have to leave.
That's correct.
And it's not like market, if you had a mixed income one, then you could stay, and the next available one would convert to affordable. It's a little trickier here, but that's all governed by the regulatory treatment.
Yeah, they're not making it up as they go, if you're getting affordable, it's all.
Yeah, and there's a bunch of a hundred percent affordable, uh, projects out there, so the templates exist for DHCD. All the low-income housing tax credit projects, large, are a hundred percent are here, a hundred percent affordable, so.
Yeah, I want to talk about the age restriction also. So, um, for, is, the age restriction is sixty-two or older. Now, to, to, for households that might have two people living there, do they both have to be, and is that governed by federal, federal law?
So, interesting.
There could be some local variation, what are you guys proposing?
Well, sixty-two plus, I think if you have an income-qualified household, if you have an age-qualified household, meaning that one person qualifies, I think you would probably get in there. We, mind you, we're talking couples, these are one-bedroom units.
Oh, I, I, I understand, so you're saying, mister is sixty-two, and missus is six, uh, fifty-eight? You're going to let them, they're going to be able to stay there?
Yeah, I, I, I don't see why they wouldn't be, I don't think I can discriminate against the family unit.
There, there is some case law that allows some amount of variation.
Yeah.
They're radical, they all come in to be on the lease.
No, but here's, I mean, this is, I've had, I've actually had a case in Marshville, a real, real case, where it was age restricted, and dad lived with his daughter there, I mean, an adult daughter.
Right.
And, and she got eviction notice from the town. And, um, you know, and, and what was explained to me is, is the concept being, if one is sixty-two, you can have granddaughter live with you, you know, or grandson live with you.
These are one-bedrooms, so. No, but they wouldn't qualify, it's not legal to.
So in that case, I couldn't, she wasn't initially on a lease.
She, she was the, no, she was the owner, she was the owner, it was that, remember the name of?
Oh, so it was a condo complex that basically was sixty-two plus, she inherited it, perhaps?
No, she bought it, she bought it, when it was built, her dad was co-owner with her after a period of time. Dad was still living with her, and, um, uh, dad decided to move out, and they said, get out of here.
So it was from the town or the homeowners association?
Well, the homeowners association complained to the town, and the, and the building instructor picked her out. But, you know, when you think about it, if it's aged, if it's elderly housing, you say it's one-bedroom, people, surprise, surprise, people, you know, put children in bedrooms with, with, they don't have enough room.
Yeah.
So I mean, I just want to, I don't, I don't want to get us in this situation. I know that was pretty unusual for Dent Marshville, um, but you, you, and it's, you kind of like, like the sixty-two and the fifty-eight, you don't really think of it, but all of a sudden, you've got a great, I'm telling you, I know way too many people that are guardians of their grandchildren.
You know, within the, you know, we obviously have a lease that we, you know, put together. Uh, you know, it gets complex when you start talking about unrelated persons or related persons. But generally, you know, I think of it as in terms of sort of the, uh, the near-do-well son kind of scenario, like Larry never, never was able to, you know, flee the, you know, never was able to, barely to launch, or whatever it should be. But, you know, the reason, and DHCD is pretty hip to that, because they actually don't permit the construction of senior housing of two-bedroom apartments for this specific reason. They don't want to have the whole-over tenant that is the son that, you know, has been living with mom for thirty years. So I think in terms of, there are, you know, probably are ways that we can manage that risk via the lease that we have with our tenants, provided that it all fits within the sort of parameters established by, uh, DHCD, uh, in what's.
The housing authority has language in the lease where only people are allowed to, you know, to be there for a certain time if they're on the lease. So it, there's some, there's some ways to be able to.
I think you can require, I mean, there's variability, and I think it's a Northborough case that, that discusses it, and said it did not fall afoul of fair housing. You can say, I believe, that, uh, all full-time occupants have to be over the age, or you could say that one full-time occupant. I think you have some.
But if you say one, you've got the risk that you've got an, you know, an underage instead of an older person.
And, and for some developments, that's okay, I guess, some people make that judgment. I, I think you can require all, in terms of full-time. I don't think you can prevent someone from having their, their grandson come over for the weekend, but.
Yeah, nobody's going to, nobody's going to hold this.
Also, there's the issue of household income, and that's what you're looking at when you're talking, starting to talk about occupancy of these units. So maybe the case that you might be, it, it might not be as much of an issue, just because you have, you know, having two people in there might throw off.
There's so many people working, I'm talking, the person who's still moving with his mother, you know, is probably not.
That is not, that, that, that we can prevent, obviously. It's, it's just, it gets, it gets complex around the issue of partnerships and, uh, you know, un, you know, you know.
Well, it's not, if you, if you keep it up, everybody, and full-time occupant needs to be sixty-two or older.
But we're on the whole.
Yeah, so, do I understand correctly, that you guys have to sit on this for another year if we don't give you a conditional permit tonight?
Oh.
No, no, no.
So, yeah, well, the issue is this, is that we need to have.
The fifteenth of February, which means.
Which we, I'm actually.
Tonight.
Yeah, this is basically, the idea is that we can take, you, if we have a conditional permit, and that's how we've always operated.
I understand.
And you spell out all the conditions you need, you, in order to feel comfortable. As long as we have that piece of paper we can file, yes, we will miss a year. More likely, this project becomes three years down the line. You know, you don't necessarily get the tax credits the first, your first bite at the apple.
So, if I may, and I have the least experience before we meet anyone sitting on this side of the room, I'd be surprised if I see another one that is as much of a yes as this one in my tenure on the board, if I'm on the board for the next forty years. How do, how do we get these guys what they need tonight, is my question.
Well, I think we could, uh, come to terms, and then we might not be able to write down everything we need to tonight, as far as the contingency.
We have quite.
Yeah, we come, come to terms, I think, you know, agree on the points, the parking we addressed, the stormwater we addressed, the other, uh, the age we, we addressed, I think a lot of the stuff will be done, and then we can just have, sort of, we.
Here's, here's my, my thinking though, if, if you guys vote tentatively, you know, based upon this kind of, of collection of conditions and thoughts, I, I really think that just given some of the variability and some of the conditions, I mean, I'm not going to be, that would be the beefiest decision I've ever done. I really think I would need to see you guys together for.
Right.
A very short hearing before the fifteenth, to go over the written document and, and approve it. I, while I feel comfortable that I could capture most of the conditions that we're talking about here, and the other kind of boilerplate things, I don't think there's enough from like an open meeting law perspective that I would feel comfortable saying, hey, John, I drafted this thing up based on our guarantee and sign it.
Yeah, no, that, that would make sense, for sure.
I, I think, I think we would need to find some time before the fifteenth for all of us to sit down. I don't think it would be a particularly lengthy proceeding, but I think it's necessary.
And that's tough, because that needs to be an open meeting, if you have to publicize.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's not hard, so we would just continue, I mean, we, you could, I wouldn't even bother closing the, the hearing just in case some new fact came up that we wanted to address, or take a look at a plan, but we could, you could kind of give the high sign today. Meet on the fifteenth, I'll have a written document for you, or sometime before the fifteenth, have a written document for you, and, uh, if, if it works, we can, you know, we'll get it done. I mean, preferably a day or two before the fifteenth, in case we.
Typos.
Give some typos, and then I could email it to Annie, and Annie could, uh, you know, some, just John could come in and sign it once and stuff.
We have a meeting on schedule for the fifteenth.
Okay. That would be too late, for, for, for my purposes, to file, I have to file by twelve o'clock on the fifteenth. So, I actually plan on filing one or two days earlier, just to, because it's a, it's an uploading process, procedure. So to the extent that it's possible, um, to shoot the twelfth, to have some, any.
Guys just want to do a nice table at oral on the fourteenth, I'll bring my wife.
Bring your chaplains, that's what I want to do.
I am available on the twelfth, I don't know, I mean.
That's a Monday?
That is a Monday.
We don't want to go Wednesday, it's kind of beautiful.
Yeah.
Do you have one question, or, or comment?
Um, yeah.
I know you were the Affordable Housing Trust.
It was about the age restriction, my only comment was, um, uh, in some cases, we, in our situation, we have live-in aides who are significantly younger than sixty-two, and they are, they are full-time occupants of the household.
In one bedroom, that might be a little more difficult, I would think.
Right.
Unless they live in the living room for part-time.
Oh, it happens.
Yeah, okay.
It happens, and furthermore, I think it's even, um, I think it's acceptable, too.
I think that, that's, I don't, I don't think we could have an age restriction working against it on the, on the grounds of disability, so I don't think any age restriction could trump the ability to do that based upon the, the elements of disability. So I'm not altogether that concerned about that. If all the full-time occupant, you know, I, I think we can work around that.
The ages of the occupant, the ages, the ages there.
I guess that's technically an employee.
Right, she's still living, she's not a resident, she might be sleeping, but she's not a resident.
Right.
She's got a home, it's not there.
Right. I can do the twelfth, or the thirteenth.
I could do, I could.
Not do the thirteenth, so it would only be the twelfth.
Do you want to do the twelfth?
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to.
Do we want to, uh, do we want to do, uh, location?
I think, you know, if we get together right at Town Hall, I don't think we're going to need a tremendous amount of time. Like, I'll work on a written thing, I'll try and get it circulated, um, hopefully by the end of next week, if not, and early, then, early the following week. I mean, I have enough.
We, we think about doing it earlier, I think, at six? Is that all type you in?
I can do six fifteen.
Six fifteen.
I think that sounds trivial.
No, but if it's six fifteen, or, yeah, that'd be.
I can do six fifteen.
That, more of you, that kind of gets it out a little. Anything you want, boss.
Wow.
Is that something that you want us to hear it?
Oh.
Yeah, you should.
I would say yes.
Alright.
That would be good.
It would be there.
I did have a question, so I have more questions.
So, yeah, so we're six fifteen at the Town Hall on the twelfth.
I wanted to talk just a little bit about the, um, building security. I think we talked about that, you, you talked about it in the very first meeting, it was a little overview.
Yeah.
Um, is the building security monitored?
Yes, so one of the nice things about, we have, um, we have six assisted living facilities. We have about five hundred employees on staff, the Grandpa Group does. Uh, one of the nice aspects about our assisted living facilities is that there's already, we have our staff, we have three shifts. Uh, out of our operations center in Marlboro, Massachusetts, we have, all of our facilities are monitored, uh, twenty-four hours by staff there. So what we're planning to do is have a remote system similar to the ones that we have existing. So you'll have a, uh, there's a name for it, uh, that's escaping me. But basically, a video system that allows us to, A, uh, you know, screen people coming and going, that'll be part of the smart entry system. Do you have another entry?
Uh, is it key entry, or is it?
It's, it's probably, it's bomb, it's all bomb, that way you can know who's coming, who's going, the data points.
They're, as I say, timestamped, you will print it out, or read it anyway.
Right, yeah, and then also, so if there's emergencies, we'll have, we have folks on twenty-four hours a day anyways, monitoring all of our facilities, so they'll be just tied into that system.
Okay, so it's a central, central alarm system as opposed to like a direct to the central police or fire?
Yes, I don't know what, I haven't explored that tie-in. I mean, obviously, the fire alarm system will be a tie-in directly to the, that's just.
And then the same thing, if it knocks blocks outside with a key, if they, you know.
Right, right.
And then again, I'm wrong, okay?
No, no, please.
My, actually. In the renditions that you have of the units, I, I noticed, um, you have the fireplace. In the renditions that you have of the units, I, I noticed you have a fireplace and trace series. Is, is that what we're going to be getting to on this?
I have a commoner.
That's a common, oh, no, that's, oh, God, nice, please. Thirty will turn fire, yeah.
That's not the unit, that's the commoner.
So, that's another distinct... She's checked out the...
Here we have it.
Okay, yeah. Well, and then the last thing I want to say is how impressed I am that the Citroen Housing Authority and everyone in your, your, your group has, has worked so hard, obviously, on this. This looks, I think this is going to be a real asset to the town. You know, I want to congratulate everybody that worked on it.
The board worked a long time, I mean, multiple years.
Yeah, it shows, and I think you're going to end up with a really awesome project. And I think you chose a really, you know, by all accounts, it looks like you chose a very good developer to do this. And it's, it's quite exciting and really anxious to see it come to fruition.
And with the fact that Citroen picked up thirty units of full-time, it's done.
For the, for the lower-income tranches, which was really important to us, not just, you know, to have it affordable, just to tick the box, but really affordable housing to help these people that really, really need the help. That was really important to us.
Yeah, well, it's, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Long as I'm in line though, I'd like to note the view of others. It has been years, just not, we're looking at a four E B, but this is not the first. The first opportunity we've had to look at it because, you know, things became looking to see if we could give you some advice in terms of earlier, we said we first need to open, we said, uh, after that. We've had to jump through a lot of hoops to get here and you have in order to get here in a time limit. So the fact that we're even talking about doing something with conditional approval, et cetera, is highly unusual. Not something that this board is going to maintain as a routine in any way, shape, or form. But this is something that's been going on literally for years. It's been before town meeting. It's embedded, that, well, you can, that's better than anyone else, that's better than anyone else.
Affordable Housing Trust, CPC, town meeting, I mean, we've, you know, meeting upon meeting, you know, and just, you know, having, having, you know, public meetings for people to come and learn more about what we're looking to do, learn more about the project, to, you know, to see what we're thinking about doing. I mean, it, it's, it's been, you know, labor of love to, to, you know, to get to this point. My board has really, really worked tremendously hard. You know, it's been a lot of extra time, field trips on Saturdays to go to, you know, to Attleboro and, and, you know, things like that to be able to, you know, to really do our homework so that we could make sure that, that we picked a good long-term partner for the town so that long after we're gone, that this building along with all these other housing authority buildings are providing the much-needed housing for our, you know, seniors. Just so everybody, so many people put in a lot of time. We really appreciate, you know, your flexibility, you know, and work with us to help with the town so that we could be able to, you know, to get in for the funding round, you know, because it's super competitive and the sooner we can get in that, the better chance we have to, you know, to actually get this, get this, you know, done. So thank you very much for, you know, for all your help and consideration.
How many people on your board?
All five.
You want to name them? I mean, this is going out to the town. I'm telling you, with check on Citroen monthly, we get a lot of criticism. I think, give that, give these people in this town an opportunity to thank those people.
Yeah, absolutely. You got John Gray, Michael Collins. We have Tammy Durante and Joe Caffrey. So a great board that's put in a lot of time to get us to the point that we are. You know, and we also have a pro bono housing consultant, Joe Armstrong, who helped us to be able to navigate through the whole process of getting the RFP of all the regulatory steps involved in that that we as volunteer board members would not have been able to figure out in a million years. So we would not be where we are today if it wasn't for all the volunteer help. So just been a, you know, a great, great team effort to get where we are.
And the funding you have in place also now from the community preservation also and funds coming as well.
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, that board has been great. Steve Irish did a great job running that board. You know, the, you know, CPC, you know, has been very, very helpful, you know, to be able to, you know, to help fulfill the mission there of taking, you know, the ten percent of those CPA funds and putting it towards affordable housing creation. So we're, we're, you know, at the point where we're, we're, we're doing what was always the vision and finally at the point where we're fantastic, you know, the project, great town support, which is very, very proud to have at this point, you know, looking forward to actually getting it done.
Thank you. Cooperation amongst town boards.
Who is not capable?
Unbelievable, we're actually shutting down government.
Can I just go back to packing?
Yes.
I know we talked about one round, one national major, one, one side, I would imagine. Some have taken two, packing per year for some.
No, 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 one point five per year.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so I think if, like we talked about, the other part. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Right, just recategorize a couple of these.
Motion to adjourn. To a time, place specific, the time being February, Monday, February twelfth at six fifteen at somewhere in the Town Hall. A, a room available in the Town Hall. Second, please.
Aye.
And I move to adjourn.
Second, please.
Aye.